Hello. Welcome. Today is Monday, May 1st.
My headphones are not on.
They're not on?
Yeah, they are.
Monday, May 1st, 2017. Time is 5:34. And we will be having a continuation of our public hearing. Yeah, thank you. Ron, we had some things we'd like to I think we have Susan would like to say something first.
If I can get the microphone over here. Thank you. My name's Susan Walkie, City Councilor. I need to state that I am met with a statutory conflict of interest. I must declare a potential conflict of interest because decisions could affect the funding of a grant that pays my salary. That grant is part of the Urban Renewal Economic Development Toolbox, which includes funding for many things in the Urban Renewal District. The Urban Renewal Budget has already been considered by the Budget Committee and I was not in attendance at that meeting. The reason I am making this disclosure for the at this meeting is that the proposed city budget on line item 6270150 entitled Economic Development Program includes an allocation from the General Fund to the Urban Renewal Economic Development Toolbox. The Economic Development Toolbox includes many tools for assisting businesses in the Urban Renewal District. One of the tools is a grant to the Bay Area Merchants Association for their Downtown Manager, which was awarded in 2014 prior to my election to the City Council. However, six months ago, I was hired as the Downtown Manager. Funds from the City General Fund could be added to the Urban Renewal Budget to assist businesses in the Urban Renewal District. Those funds could be used to pay my salary.
Thank you. So, we were going to go over the budgetary impact statements from before?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I just want to let you know I need to be at a meeting at 6:30, so I'll be leaving early.
Excellent. I also have the babysitter until 9 o'clock, so I have to leave at 8:45.
Very good.
Thank you. Also, if I may, if we had questions regarding the funds that we and departments that we had before, when are we or do we talk about those?
Of the ones we've already discussed?
Correct.
You can bring them up at any time that you like.
So, if we all would like to do that now, in addition to the new information that we've you've been able to collect?
That would be fine. Sure.
Okay. Do you want to start with that?
Yeah, let me start with just the answering of the questions. I'll briefly go through them. I included this information in your packet. There were many questions that were asked at our last meeting. Some of them were informational. Some of them had a budgetary impact. So, the ones that I wanted to just touch on today are those that would have a budgetary impact and as a reminder on how we discuss with you in going forward, this information will come to you today. Any of the additional questions we received today, we'll bring them back, those at the next meeting. And then, as you look at those, we'll go through each one of these individually. And if there is a vote by that would have eight of you that would agree that would we would incorporate that into the budget and then you would vote on the budget in whole. So, if there wasn't a vote on it, they could get eight votes on one of these particular items, then it would not be included in the final vote of the budget. Okay. So, the first question that was asked is can we add the marijuana tax into the budget? The answer to that is yes. The biggest question we had is how much do we put in? We don't really know.
Ron, I'm sorry. I did not do a roll call.
Oh, okay.
So, can we do that first?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Dick Anderson?
Here.
Judy Casper?
Here.
Amanda Cherry-Holmes?
Here.
Jim Davis? Haven't heard from him. Deanna Hinton?
Here.
Riley Holgland?
Here.
Kevin Holmbaum?
Here.
Doug Holbrook?
Here.
Chester Norikas?
Here.
Lee Ritchie?
Here.
Susan Walkie?
Here.
Kip Ward?
Here.
Randy Weldon?
Here.
Don Williams?
Here.
Okay. So, the question that was asked is can we add the marijuana tax into the budget specifically into as a revenue? The answer is yes, you can. As we look to try to figure out how much, we don't really know. So, we wanted to be conservative on what that estimate would be. And so, we if you want to add that in, we would suggest that you add $5,000. Related to that question is can we break down where the money from the marijuana will be spent? The answer to that is yes. Again, the amount that I would suggest is $5,000. There's a couple of ways you can do that. You can simply put it in as a general fund tax and then increase a budget item or identify a new budget item wherever you would like to do that. Or, you can recommend to the City Council that they adopt a resolution or some other document that designates that it would specifically go to a certain item. Okay? The question or the statement was to include a budget include in the budget a Parks Director. The cost associated with that would be $136,250. That would be an increase to the budget. That's 100 and this is total compensation, $108,250 for compensation and $28,000 for a vehicle. We were asked to look at the cost of a quarterly mailing to put into the budget. That cost would be $2,000. We were asked to consider an in-house auditor. The cost of that for total compensation would be $102,830. We were asked what will it take to add a program that allows people to see the budget on the webpage? This would take more research, but our preliminary estimate would be about $15,000. That would be an upfront cost. Upfront and first year maintenance fee. After that, there would be an ongoing maintenance fee. We were asked the cost of putting Kevlar backing behind the desk and a panic button in the library. That would be $9,500. We were asked to look at the cost of installing cameras along Highway 101 and a screen and dispatch to monitor those. There's quite a lengthy discussion in that in the packet. At this point, we really don't know how much that would be. There's a lot of unanswered questions. So, if you want to add that to the budget, we would suggest that at this point, you just put $10,000 in it for us to do the necessary research, questioning, study, and so forth. And then, at a later date, the budget could be amended by the City Council to add the full amount if they if they want. I've heard estimates up to a million dollars, but again, I don't really know at this point how much that would be. What's the cost of adding cameras in the City Hall and the library? What is the cost of processing utility payments through paper payments to the office? That would be for personnel costs instead of using the lockbox. That would be an additional cost of somewhere between $28,700 and $27,266, depending upon where an employee comes in at that. And then, the final question was or and then so all of these, when you look at the subtotal of these requests, it would be an additional $5,000 to revenue and $332,231 in expenditures. Okay? Now, what I haven't discussed is where that money would come from. Ultimately, that would have to be a discussion of where it would come from. It would either come from one of two one of three areas, by raising revenues, by reducing an expense, or by reducing the amount of the ending fund balance. Okay? Any questions on those?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a copy of that, please?
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you.
Yeah, for maybe send one out?
I don't know if they got sent to the non-City Council members.
Ah, so I didn't get.
Were there other things that were sent out?
There Ron referred to a packet a couple of times.
In your so on the webpage, there's a packet that has these, but it didn't break it down where these are separated from the other questions. So, I can just email this out to you and it separates them out. I guess I know an apology a little bit to some of our new members. When the when the agenda is posted, the packet that contains all of this information is on the city's webpage under agendas and so that's where you can find that. Okay.
Do you want to go over the each of the topics that we went over? The general fund, City Council expenditures and?
Sure. If there are any other questions on our previous meeting, this would be a great time.
Is this the time is this the time in which if we did or did not agree with potential things that we would talk about it here? Or does it get presented, then we deliberate, and then it gets submitted?
It's really up to you, Chairman, that ultimately, when we look at adding anything into the budget like these items that we discussed, there will need to be a motion and a second and a vote on it. And so, whether you have that discussion at that time or you want to have that discussion now is really up to you committee members.
Okay. So, I guess if if we've gone over the general fund, City Council expenditures, the City Administration, Finance, Library, Police, and Dispatch, if at now, we have things that we would like to take out, remove or remove or add things would be now?
Sure.
To make a motion to do so, second, deliberate, now?
No, not to make the motion, but if there's things that so far, you've added one revenue and added a whole bunch of expenses. If you want to start either adding more or taking out, just let me know what those are and then at the last meeting, then we'll vote on it. We'll vote everything individually.
Okay. So, let's just talk about the first one. Does anybody have things that they would like to take out or add to the general fund record?
Can may I go way back?
Sure.
Way back to our last meeting and questions of what we did. The very last question was mine and it was the cost of processing the utility payments. And I think somehow we misunderstood each other because we focused on using a lockbox and I believe the lockbox is used for payments that people use cards for. No?
No. Where do I misunderstand?
It's where the paper checks are mailed to. That's why.
Oh, that's where they're mailed to. Okay.
And they process it.
Okay.
And I and I put some actually some wrong information into this. The this is the correct information, but I have the annual cost for the lockbox at That is the cost for the entire service that we have, but the cost that just deals with the processing of the checks that come through is $9,000.
Subtract it from the 22.
The amount that you see here is that the cost for processing through the utility payments through an employee instead of through a lockbox would be between $21,000 and $27,000. That would be an increase to the budget.
So, let's just go through the each of those those items that you had. So, if anybody had ideas that they'd like to just deliberate at the end of this for the general fund would be the first topic that we went over? Nobody? Okay. Then we have. I mean, that's the whole thing. So, I guess at the end, City Council expenditures could be would be the next one, which if we were looking at the mailers, could possibly go there. Does anybody else have any other ideas for City Council budget? Okay. The City Administration expenditures, anybody have things that they would like to take out or increase?
Chair?
Sir.
Are we as we're having this discussion, take out or or add in? Are we assuming these are already added in or are we assuming these are not?
These are things that these are the questions that we thought.
Correct. So, at this point, those aren't an assumption that they're.
At the end, with all of our questions, we'll go through these. Do we want to make a motion to add or subtract what we end up having?
Thank you.
So, city we're at City Administration expenditures.
Wait a second here.
That is would be well, okay. So, there's two parts to the to the budget. There's the budget message, there's the budget worksheets. So, we have been working off the budget message and and.
So, this was not taking into account that we in addition to going over the budget message, looking at the line items and seeing if we had any discrepancies in what we thought? So, we did not do that part?
We have not done that, no, sir.
Okay.
And so, the budget, so if you're looking at the City Administration, it's page 11 of the of the city budget portion of the budget, the tab that says city budget.
So, then maybe we should go over the line items for each of the topics that we've discussed through the budget message up until this point and then moving forward, talk about them at the same time. So that we're not going back to back and forth and back and forth, going through the narrative and then going through the line items. So, that way, they're all all together.
That's what you all decided on across this last meeting.
Yeah, I wasn't clear at the last meeting about that. So, I'm I would like to change it so that we go through each one at the same time.
We go through the line item detail sheet at the same time we go through the budget message?
Correct. If you had if you had if you have things to go over each of your line items, going over the message at the same time. But we can't do that until we I wouldn't I want to go over what we've already gone through first.
Okay. Then I have a comment.
Okay. So, so should we go back to the general fund then? Okay.
Revenue.
Sorry. Thank you.
General fund revenue.
The general fund revenue, line items from the budget itself is what we will be going through.
Okay.
Which is page?
If you go to page five. Actually, if you'll go to page one of the city budget portion. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you are right. It's page five.
Page five is a summary of the general fund in total and then the detail lines follow that.
Through page nine, I think.
Mr. Chair, there's one thing I'd like to do before we jump into this. This is actually the appendix. It's a very good time to get this picture and that is a forecast of where we will where we are going over the next five-plus years. This will be helpful as you consider changes to the budget. Are you okay with that?
Where is that?
It would be on page seven of the appendix.
And this is to go into in with the general fund resources?
Yes, well, it's actually a projection. If you look at the resources and the costs or the expenditures, it's talking about where you can expect to be by the end of 2023.
I'm sorry, was this distributed at the last meeting? Because I don't know that.
Well, it was well, it was planned to be discussed, but it never was discussed. It's if.
I do not have that page. There were there were a few books that got picked up before they got put in and I believe I emailed them out individually, but I'll certainly make a copy.
Well, no. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Mr. Kim?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Are you all listening to the appendix?
I have the first six pages of the appendix, but not from seven on.
We'll just start with the Kathy, you are on the revenues.
Page five. We're not going to talk about the general fund now, what are you saying?
This will be part of that discussion. We'll go through the general fund revenues, then we'll go through the work papers for the expenditures.
Okay.
The.
Page five.
Yeah, page five of the of the budget section of the budget.
To coincide with two, three, and four of the budget message.
Right.
So, is it it's my understanding that there have been no marijuana tax proceeds included in the purpose?
That's correct. Okay. That's correct. So, the total budget, there's let me begin with the down at the bottom, the unappropriated fund balance, okay, which is $6,805,289. Last year, we had established as a as a policy to follow that we would try to maintain a $6 million ending fund balance as a rainy day fund. Okay? The total fund balance that would be available for future expenditures is $8,705,000. Of that, we would keep 1.9 million as a contingency. That's for things that will come up during the year that are unanticipated. The contingency is money that we can spend with a budget amendment. The unappropriated fund balance is very restricted. There's only just two or three cases in which we can use those funds and that that is essentially the rainy day fund for the city. So, we have tried to maintain that policy of of keeping a $6 million fund balance.
Is this the it being that it being that part of the previous budgets, is this labeled differently than before?
Well, you know, no, it's not labeled differently. We've actually looked at whether or not you can create something and call it a rainy day fund and we haven't found that you can do that. And so, it just shows up as the unappropriated fund balance, but that's what we that's what we've designated it to be used.
Right before it was just part of the general fund?
It's still part of the general fund, but it didn't have that designation.
That can only be used.
Right.
Okay.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay. Revenues are expected to increase by 1.7% or $198,483. Expenditures are expected. What did I do? Oh, thank you. Oh, yes, thank you. Okay. So, the expenditures are actually scheduled to decrease. You'll note that in the budget, it says $11,913,000. But of that, $1,093,000 is transfers. So, part of what we were looking at is what are what are the expenditures supposed to be like without that? And so, you'll see that it just about pretty much breaks even. Another thing to note is that we are coming in much higher than we had expected in our estimated ending fund balance. We had budgeted that that would come in at $7 million. We are expecting that it will come in at about $8.6 million. Okay? So, revenues have been higher, expenditures have been lower, and as a result, we have more money than we had budgeted at the end of the year.
Darn.
Okay? Darn. Any questions on on this discussion?
I think we can. Yes, sir.
Ron, can you explain why the police budget has increased significantly?
Sure can.
Did they get some new hires or?
I think I mean, I think that's part of what we're going to end up going through.
Yeah.
Already. So, we're going to go through each of those that we've talked about. Those are that is one of the expenditures that we've talked about in the in the narrative and tonight, we're going to go through the line items.
Yeah, so we will be coming to that. Thank you. Okay. The next one that we talked about at the last meeting was the City Council. There's virtually no change from the previous from the previous budget. Previous budget was $24,704. This budget is $24,617.
Oh, I I had one thing to say about resources. I didn't know we were going straight to the next one. I saw that the glass studio rent income is now part of that we're paying ourselves.
Can you explain that?
In the past, this has been in the Urban Renewal Fund. That built that building is in process being transferred to the city ownership and so the both the maintenance costs and the revenue are now moving to the general fund. So, that's why that's a new revenue item for the general fund. There's also an expense for that that is in the Economic Development Cost Center in the general fund, which is a new cost center that we've created. But it is coming it's not coming from ourselves. It is an external party that's paying that.
This is also regarding the CIS Wellness Incentive Program. I see in other departments, it has a zero in some departments, but I see that it's proposed zero for the resources. And so, I was wondering what determines like in dispatch is a zero, but police, it's more than finance. So, I was wondering the reason for that.
So, there's a revenue line item for the CIS Wellness and then there's also an expense item.
Oh.
The revenue item is for like if, for example, we have someone that needs to go on special or light duty for a while and there's some equipment that perhaps might enable them to work, CIS has a program that they will give us grants for that. We don't budget for it because we don't know if and when it'll happen, but it the revenue comes in and then expense comes in. In the individual departments, there's an employee wellness line and that is primarily for employee memberships to the community center.
Oh, so the revenue so if there's if it's zero, it's because there are no employees that historically have been using that and that money goes as a revenue to the community center.
Thank you for your.
In that case, we are paying ourselves.
Hey, all right. So, that was page, I don't know, that was page something nine or eight, nine. And then, if we're going to go to City Council, that would be page 10.
Again, on the City Council, the budget is the same as it as it was in this in this year.
If you didn't have this picture.
So, that okay. Everybody else, any does anyone else have any ideas for the City Council page ten?
Quick question. Recruitment and relocation. What were we doing there? I can't recall recruiting or relocating.
Background checks.
And that would be for all of the committees.
Thank you. All right. Next one would be the City Administration.
Okay, and the City Administration, this is page 11 of the city budget section. The expenditures are $63,270, which is over the fiscal year 2017 budget. If we can, there's been a proposal that ties two together and I'd kind of like to discuss them now. If you recall, in our last meeting, we discussed the idea of having a public relations, public employee that we were going to take from the Finance Department, which hasn't been using that, and put that into the administration. Tonight, we'll also be discussing the City Attorney's Budget and and. Um, tonight, we'll also be discussing, uh, the city attorney's budget, and, uh, and since the budget was pris- was printed, there's been another idea that has come up that I wanted to, to bring tonight. Uh, in the original proposal for the, uh, that the staff made on the city attorney's budget was to hire, uh, an assistant, a, uh, half-time, uh, twenty-hour-a-week assistant. Uh, I did not add that to the budget, but I said that I would bring that up. The cost for that position would be about thirty-seven thousand dollars. Now, since then, uh, since the budget was actually published, there, I've had more discussions on, um, on how that could happen without that increased budget. And so what I wanted to discuss with you tonight, and these are related, and it will change this budget, and it would also change the attorney's budget, and that is that, um, right now, under our administration, um, the administrative assistant that works for admin, um, part of her time is, works with me, part of her time works with the attorney, and part of her time works with the city recorder. This budget had also looked at the idea of adding, um, ten more hours to one of our other employees, uh, to help the city recorder in getting the work done. That frees up that administrator, administrative assistants' time a little bit. The second thing that, uh, that we looked at is that if we took that, um, that, uh, PR position, and instead of creating a new position, we use that to create an administrative assistant for the attorney, that would free up more time with the, with our current administrative assistant, which essentially means that her time would be devoted to me and to, to my position. By eliminating the idea of the PR person, which would now be picked up by this, by my administrative assistant, uh, that, uh, those funds could go then for an administrative assistant for the attorney for twenty hours a week, uh, that would only increase the budget by about seven thousand dollars, instead of the thirty-six thousand that we'd originally proposed. So like I said, initially, we looked at it based on how we laid it out. As I've talked more with the staff about it, on how can we make, you know, how, how can this work without that full amount? Essentially, what it works out is that we would not be hiring a public relations employee. That duty would then fall to my administrative assistant, uh, who's, and then an administra- and the money that would be freed up from that public relations employee can then be hired, uh, used to hire an administrative assistance for the attorney, and so the overall total budget increase would be about seven thousand dollars. Does any of that make sense?
No, not at all. I think it does, but it doesn't.
I said...
Yeah.
Okay, um, actually, that makes perfect sense to me, if, um, this person would be reporting to the, um, city attorney, and that that would be their sole or their priority.
Let me, uh, let me just, to help make it a little bit easier, let me just use this easel to see if I can draw it out so you can see what might happen. It might make it a little bit easier, I think...
I think I got it. I, I got it.
Are we the X's or the circles? If you use numbers, I can't read it.
You need markers.
You got a marker? So high-tech here in Lincoln City.
Excuse me, Ron, can you bring it a little forward so that it doesn't get, yeah?
There we go. It was in the projector light.
And you have the recorder, okay, and you have one administrative assistant that works for all three of them.
That's not working.
And that the budget proposed that...
Finance.
Still have this, the administrative assistant, but also we got this working at the end. So, what I'm proposing through your consideration is that if we're putting a third employee in, we also in the budget propose increasing ten hours of level of employment. This is an administrative assistant, we're reporting city manager, attorney, and the PR position. And employees less than a reasonable number. That's how the budget's laid out. Now, what... We're now considering, what they actually considered, the recorder, you still have the part-time, ten-hour position. Under city manager, we have administrative assistant.
Full-time?
And so what that position can do is because this frees up that time, and the attorney would have part-time administrative assistants. Now, so what you're gonna do is this person here, the administrative assistant, that divides the time between three, well, not four, they're all straight up.
And public relations? Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, so these people that we're putting in there, for example, is it, did you have twenty hours for the, uh, the attorney? Yeah. Twenty hours, now, is that twenty hours that you're gonna grow, go out and hire? Or is that twenty hours from somebody that we already have from another department? Okay, so we would, when we were... And would that person be qualified as, for example, being a paralegal? Okay, and same thing for the, uh, city recorder? Would she be getting, um, someone, or, or part of some, would she be getting, would you hire someone new, or would she be getting that already exists?
I'm not sure we're picking...
Yeah, I was, I don't know if we're gonna be able to hear everything that you said, so what should we do? Redescribe everything? I mean, is this necessary that it's...
It's the same number of FTEs, the, what's in the proposed budget versus the, this alternative, it's just where you're plugging them.
And again, if we, if we decided that we wanted to hire a full-time, make someone full-time instead of creating another new part-time position with no benefits, that is something that, at the end, we could say, do we wanna do that or this, correct?
Yeah, what you, yes, you could do that. Um, if you, if you wanted to have an employee that would go full-time...
Correct.
Versus an employer hired, yes. Yes, you could do that.
I mean...
Yeah, and so, anyway, so what you have essentially in this is the total cost of the budget. Some of this, interestingly enough, I first looked at that and asked myself, do I have the authority to just do this on my own? And, uh, and the, the answer became no, because it has a budgetary impact. Um, when we were looking at keeping the same structure as we have now, but just adding a public relations employee into it, to add an administrative assistant would be about thirty-seven thousand dollars. But if the time is freed up with the employee we currently have, so that she would devote her time to my work plus the PR work, then the total budget impact for a part-time employee is seven thousand dollars.
So that is the second part-time seasonal salary increase, part of that for the proposed budget, that forty-two thousand?
It is not, yeah...
That's not part of the finance?
The, the increase in the part-time seasonal is, is the hours that are under Kathy.
Those are, okay, so that's where, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. So for the, is it ten, ten hours for, uh, city recorder? No.
Yes.
That person's, I mean, I don't know who that person is, but I, my concern is, is if we're just taking them from another department, that they're, are qualified to do the work that needs to be done for the city recorder. I mean, if you put me in there with her, I'd, she'd kick me out in an hour because I don't know any of that.
Yes, I think she's qualified.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Well, my concern, and I'm not speaking to the, the workload, but I'm looking at the dollars spent. We already have, where are we at, two hundred and thirty-five thousand budgeted for the attorney's position, and we're gonna add another seven thousand to it. Now, I'm just looking at the combination of Astoria, Seaside, Reed Sport, and Telemont together don't even have that budget, and I don't know that we need another person, and I sure don't think we need to make another expenditure into that department.
Thank you. Don, if I could make a correction, I think what they're proposing isn't adding just seven thousand dollars to that, because you're adding the whole, you're adding twenty-hour position in there, correct?
Yeah, it's a, it's adding a...
Seven thousand dollars, it's add seven thousand...
Of course, most of the attorney's itself.
It's, it's adding, it's adding a whole new position, but because we're taking out the public relations position, the net increase is only seven thousand dollars.
The net increase to the budget is only seven thousand dollars, but the increase to the, to the legal department is more than seven thousand dollars, because it increases the legal department's twenty-hour position.
What you would basically see in that is that the administration budget would go down by twelve thousand...
Right.
And the attorney's budget would go up by nineteen thousand. Yeah, you're exactly right on that.
Two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, approximately. Okay. I just, I, I'm sorry, I can't see in the town, the size of Lincoln City, we're not even close to any other cities in, in comparable costs.
Right, we'll, we'll be coming to the city attorney soon.
I understand, but I'm running out of time, so I had to have my say.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I, uh, have no knowledge of the proposal, um, but if, just a suggestion, is that if there are two twenty-hour people, that's one full-time job, the city recorder's position actually does, uh, ask for a legal assistant or a legal background, so that one person could work for me and for the city attorney split.
As opposed to increasing, so, another employees for...
That is not what I'm proposing. I, I am not, under, under either of these circumstances, I'm not proposing that the attorney share his, if, if you approve an assistant, I'm not proposing that the attorney share that time with the recorder. The proposal I have is the, is the ten hours that we're doing, that we've already added on to this, uh, this year, we, we started this quite some time ago.
So, Mr. Chandler, are you giving me a twenty-hour week or just ten?
Ten.
Okay. So, for the finance department in the line items, does any other budget committee member have suggestions of removal or adding information to be discussed and debated upon at the end of this proposal?
I would just like to entertain the idea of what the city recorder requested, maybe, how much more would it be in the budget? I mean, would, is the workload sufficient that a half-time person would be a much better choice to keep up on, on all of the city's business, which we seem to be behind on?
I would like to save that discussion until you review my evaluation with me, and I have the opportunity to talk about personnel issues in private.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Williams, are we leaving? Are you leaving?
I do, I have a hard meeting at six-thirty, I cannot, thank you very much.
Let the record show, Mr. Williams leaving. So if we are not, uh, we have no more information for the finance department, our next one that we went over was library, in the narrative? Is that your next slide? Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Norrie.
Mr. Chandler, what message did you give your, did you give your employees regarding presenting you with a budget? Like, last year, you told them, as I recall... Can you refresh me on what you told them last year?
The budget message I had everybody start with is that the same amount as last year.
Zero point is what you call it?
Mm-hmm, and then we would go from there. Now, we didn't end up there, but, uh, but I wanted to start there so that by the time you guys ask the hard questions, we've already asked them ourselves, and for the most part, we have stayed at that, uh, and so where we have seen an increase, one where we cut it back somewhere else.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chandler. We can't see because of the easel. Thank you.
This is where we picked up from our last meeting, is municipal court, so... Are there any questions on library?
So, yes. Is this one we can...
Yes, please.
Okay, may I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I also had some general fund things, but we were moving off, um, so I'm not sure when to go back to that, but for the library, um, I'd like to see those library safety features, and instead of the nine, ninety-five hundred, I put in eighty-five hundred, and... That's for the Kevlar backing and the panic button.
Right, I think those will, if we want to increase it at the end of this present, the entire presentation, the things that we would like to add or remove, motion, second, debate, and vote, all those will be done at the end. Right now, we're going through both the line, we're going through the line items to catch up on the narrative, that if we had questions to add to those, we're, we're doing so now through the subjects that we've already talked about.
Okay, I'm ahead of myself.
So any other items that we'd like to take away or add to the library? Okay. That, that one with the new services, we're not yet sure about that digital download. On, and in a radio interview, it sounded like we had purchased it, but then you said we didn't purchase it, so then I was confused because...
We've left six thousand dollars in the budget, so that if, um, if Kirsten can find a way to have a fixed expense, we would be able to do it.
Okay.
But if she can't find that way, then it would be expense we would not, we would not, uh, use.
The other question I had is where the library sales of the book sales, and there's two nonprofits, in that same interview, she said they received twenty thousand dollars in revenue from that. Where does that go when it's specific to the library?
So, believe the friend to the library ran the book sales?
I don't recall, it was the interview that Mr. Chandler had on the radio, where Kirsten was talking about the funds of which they've, they've accumulated about twenty thousand dollars and, from those two foundations, and I was just wondering, where is it in here?
So it doesn't come into our budget until they decide to give it to us in whatever form, they may decide to purchase a piece of equipment and donate that to the city. Um, it's probably the more typical way, they will, they'll actually purchase an item and donate that. Because the budget's pretty much a cash basis, that just shows up on our, it shows up on our... our, it shows up on our enterprise level in the financial statements, but not in the budget because it's a non-cash transaction. If they actually donate cash, it would be in one of the library revenue lines.
And as such, donated items, do, do they have a worth and an estimated value to each department since, I mean, I don't think finance is going to get donated something like the library would, but, I mean, how do those get, you know?
They're booked in our fixed asset system and they're recorded. So we have three levels in our financial statements. We have the enterprise level, which is a full accrual, so it gets booked in there as a donation, but down here at the budget level, it does not.
Okay. Thank you.
Government accounting.
Hey, guess what I don't know anything about?
It's awful.
Thank you for explaining. Okay. Any other questions that we have? Looks like we're going to fix our bookmobile, an increase of $2,000. That's good, right?
Yes.
Awesome. Is that, then that's on our vehicle list as well? It's all right, it doesn't need to be purchased. We're not running out there trying to run miles on it?
Right.
Okay. The next one, was it police? Oh, no.
Municipal court. So we have not discussed this one yet. The budget's on the municipal court. The expenditures is $7,912 less than the fiscal 2000, 2017 budget. That's due to, we had an employee that was in that. We promoted that employee, hired a new one. They came in at a lesser, a lesser salary.
You promote them and they got paid less?
They moved to another department at the same time.
The employee that got promoted got paid more. The new employee was paid less than the employee when they were promoted. Revenue is $122,200, which is, makes that the municipal court revenue is over expenditures by $51,219. Now, Councilor Hoagland had asked me some time ago to look at the idea of a municipal court and what the cost of that would be. So we went, we compared with other communities that were of similar size, either in the police, the population, the type of, the number citations and so forth, and, and compared those. And the four that we used that were similar were Oregon City, Ashland, St. Helens, and Florence, Florence being the closest. Florence, their budgets, annual budgets for their courts range at the low of Florence of $279,500. St. Helens is $403,330. Ashland is $480,504. And Oregon City is 656,744. So we then looked at our staffing levels, compared it against these others, and looked at what, what would be needed to operate a court of record. In all of these, right now, our judge is about 10 hours a week. The, the judges in all of these communities were 20 hours a week at least. So we looked at then increasing the judge's salary. The, all of the staffing levels are at least two employees for a municipal court. Florence has two and a half. They're cutting back to two, but all of them are at least two or more. So we looked at the idea of what it would take to add two additional employees, and that is approximately $140,000. There would be an additional funding needed for a city attorney to handle the prosecution. Based upon the information of these four communities, we've estimated the cost would be between $40,000 to $50,000. There's also the fees that are associated for defense attorneys. And again, based on these four communities, we estimated that the cost would be between $50,000 and $65,000 for that. You also have witness fees, jury fees, transportation to and from the county jail. And so we have estimated that the additional cost would be somewhere between about $275,000 to $325,000 beyond the $71,000 we spend.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Ron, what would be the advantage?
I will leave that up to the person who proposed it to me, and I don't think I'm-
Yeah, we can talk about it now if you want, or later. It was based upon the overtime fee, overtime associated with driving to Newport for a police force, and how we can obtain or prosecute more, things like that, have a more service of court. I don't know.
Mr. Chair.
But that was where it came from.
Okay.
It would also be additional income.
Oh, yeah, there's-
And the amount of income that would have to be increased to break even, you'd have to increase your revenues by $178,000.
Right. Has there been a municipal court in Lincoln City that costs less than what it made?
I don't know. I haven't looked at that history to know that. I'll, I'll find out.
That's, yes.
I mean, if it's, it's like-
It was back in the, back in the seventies, right, early eighties. Yeah, they were making money out of their municipal, their city court.
We'll see. And that was also the balance off of the overtime of the police and all that associated with going down there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'll make this real quick, because it's a little bit non-sequitur, but can we write tickets to the district court or circuit court? Circuit, circuit in Newport. Can we just shuffle that off? Because when I got a ticket, I had to go to Newport.
Right.
They can, they can choose which one. When I got a ticket, they sent me to Newport too.
But if we had one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe that felonies would still have to be cited into circuit court.
They would.
Right.
And gross misdemeanors.
So they're still-
Yeah, there's up into a level, I understand, yeah.
So just, Mr. Chairman, just out of curiosity, I mean, that, I think what you were proposing were these kind of things, is another department or expansion, huge expansion of a municipal. I'm hoping that really isn't done at a budget level yet, that council would have opportunity to debate and see the pros and cons, you know, before, you know, this even went to, you know, any more extent of researching than what's already been done. Is that a truism? Or in the, in your hip pocket, are you looking at an amendment to start forming, to budget for a municipal court?
I don't know. I was-
I mean, this, in this fiscal year?
I don't know.
Okay.
I was told that if I wanted to pursue this, it would, we would go this, this way. I know that after we had approved it, it gets sent to city council where we would adopt or not adopt the budget itself. And at that time, could we say yea or nay again?
You could. You could also, that, that, what this does is just change the budget. The actual authorization and the creation of the court would follow afterwards, and you, you would have that debate that Mr. Anderson was talking about.
Right. I would concur with Mr. Anderson's point of view, and it seems like a larger philosophical question that needs to be, policies that need, that needs to be discussed another level before it comes down to budget. Sure, but I mean, one, one has to come first. I mean, this is where we're at.
I'd like to remind people too, just because it's budgeted doesn't mean we have to spend it.
Right, right. So, Ron, if I may, are we now not, we're just going to go through the line items since-
Yeah, well-
In addition to going over what we did only in the narrative before.
So, yeah, on these ones, so what I've got under my notes are both comments on the, from the narrative, and also these worksheets. So I can combine the two discussions into one if you would like.
I just wanted to be able to line item, talk about line item of the ones we have already talked about, and then start what we have not yet talked about.
We haven't talked about the police, but I think that comes up.
Right, I think.
Comes up, well, we got the attorney, planning, and then police.
That's what I mean. I don't want to, I do not want to go through the city attorney, planning, and building inspection before going over to police.
Oh, okay. We'll jump to police then.
We talked about police.
Yeah, we did, we did the police.
We talked it in the narrative. We did not talk about the, the actual money part. I think we did. I thought we had, but-
I just have a note to myself that we-
Yeah, we did, we did in the narrative. We did not the line item. We did.
So are there any questions on the police? Well, then I guess.
Thanks, Dick.
I mean, that's, quickly, looking at the police on page 22, do you have any questions? You know, the-
Page 22, he says.
That's where it starts, yeah. Thank you, Dick.
Yes, I have one question.
Yes, in the same time.
What is paid vacation police? What is that? Is that just vacation time? What does that mean?
In, in the LCPA contract, there's a provision that at the end of the fiscal year, if, if people have over a certain level of vacation, that we cash that out. When we cash it out, it goes in, in the actual, it goes into regular salaries, which is why you don't really see it in the history. Except I think I did pull it out one year. It's placeholder for that.
Also in the police, I would like to talk about not having the citizens academy and not having the police cadet program. Yes, ma'am.
There's, there's no mention of, I don't know where it should be, but the building, the police building in the budget anywhere, or is that because it's down the road?
It's because it's down the road.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there's too many unknowns at this point for us to budget for that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Ron, is the, the salary line, is, is that full employment, or is that at current level with the vacancies?
There, there's no FTE changes proposed in the police budget in the full-time line item. They've had a lot of vacancies, which is why the estimate is, is quite a bit lower than what the budget is. But the proposed budget of 1.986 million is at full staffing. There is additional salaries in the part-time, and that's the police cadet.
Thank you.
We have the other equipment for $75,000. That was the radio? If in the event for the-
Yes.
Okay. Oh, yeah, here you go. Thanks, Dick.
And we're going to have the opportunity to add or subtract down the road.
Right now, we're saying what it is that we would like to add or subtract. Later on, we will, at the end of the proposal, go through each one of our individual concerns. If there's a motion, second it, talk about it, and then vote.
It would be helpful if you have, if you have items that you want to add or eliminate, to let us know now, because at your next meeting, we'll bring back the budgetary impact on those. So for example, Mr. Hoagland mentioned eliminate the cadet program and eliminate the police, the police academy, citizens' police academy. We will bring back the savings that would be from this budget by doing that. And so did you have that information?
So if we have things that we'd like to add, you want that done now?
The sooner we get it, the better, because then we can, we can make sure we get the right budget number.
Right. So-
Yeah, we're not going to discuss it. Just say, just say what it is that you would like to take away or add, and then we will make it known. Right.
Yeah. And how the, what I had said a couple of weeks ago wasn't, how it was up, presented up there, wasn't exactly how I intended it to. So I, I think we need to give our employees the proper tools, and I don't think the police department has the, has the best tools available. I would like to see a space, placeholder to consider placing video where there's hot spots or trouble spots. And you can do this very slowly or as fast as you want. Some of those hot spots, I would say, would be, for example, outside the restroom doors because they're trashed on a weekly basis near the skate park where you're already doing that. The police will know where the trouble areas are, and, you know, to say, well, this is going to cost $30,000 or $40,000. I don't think you'll know once you get into it, and you can go faster if you want to step on the gas, or go slower if you step on the brakes. But I think it needs to have its day in court. Right now, we are six officers short, and we're unable to retain them. And we already pay at the top of the scale for a town our size. And currently, we're considering a new place, police building for 21,000 square feet, which is bigger than my hotel considerably. And a, so I would strongly suggest taking a look at new technology. New officers are, are technology-based. The law enforcement is increasingly technology-based. Really can't add a price on that, but we can put a placeholder and start to take a look at that, because the trend of things is smaller and more efficient. And just put a little jab in here, not mean one, but I, I don't think that, you know, a huge police department is going to, a huge building is going to solve our problems. I also like to see a couple of dogs. Those would be very popular with the police, and they're very safe. Right now, you've got police that have 30 pounds of equipment on them trying to run. If they have a dog, people don't try to run. It's over right there. And so those are things that, I, I don't know how you want to lump them, but there's really not a price tag you can put on them. But as, as we go through, you can, we can pick through and, and have some back and forth with the police department of what they would like to see happen. And those guys are our front line, and they need to have the best tools available. So that's my little speech.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
There was a question raised from the last meeting about the cost of the citizens academy. I don't see it as a light item, and-
We've had to, we've, we've had to take a step back on that, because the, the amount of hours, we said were 404, I believe have been miscalculated.
Yeah.
So, so our HR director is actually going back through to make sure we give you an accurate accounting of where the money, money was spent and where it came from. So we will have that for you for the next meeting.
I saw that-
As a participant, I don't think there were big costs associated with that.
Right. Right. Like I said, we'll, we'll be able to, there was a big enough question that came out, and 404 is an awful lot of overtime hours. And there was a big enough question, as Debbie and I talked about it, that we've asked our HR director to go back and look at all of the time sheets that were associated during that time, and figure out just exactly how much we spent on that. And so we'll have that for you for your next meeting.
Thank you.
Can, can you tell me again how many police officers you had in 2014, or 2015? Was it 21?
I think so.
And then currently, we have 20?
I believe so.
I'm just looking at the actual regular full-time salary, you know, that top line for the last, and at, going against the number of officers for the estimated 2016, 17.
Oh, let me see what you're saying.
I'm sorry. For the overtime, you said for six hours, six officers down, we have incurred $280,000 of overtime. But then that other sheet that you had was $164,000 per officer. 164 times six is not 280. So I just wonder how are we needing the hours, but needing more officers that wouldn't equate to the same number?
In 2015, we had 21. 2016, we had 20. In 2017, we have 20. 2014, we had 24.
Right. I just was, am I, hope I'm asking that?
I think I understand what you're asking.
So the actual need was $280,000 worth of overtime, but cost, I don't know. It's, it's different. I don't know what I'm trying to say here.
I think I understand what you're trying to, just ask.
The need and want, I don't know.
Hey.
Chair?
Sir?
Ron, this, this is a question- Ron, this, this is a question I should have asked last time when the police chief was here. Is the largest barrier, is, is salary the biggest barrier for people coming to? I understand recruiting police officers in small towns, tough all over right now. But is salary the biggest barrier to that?
Uh, not always. We've actually, what, what we have found more recently is, over the last two years, it's where we've been looking for police officers and the way we have been looking. We have expanded the area where we are looking for, for employees. And then the other thing that we did is that we're using a national testing center instead of conducting individual tests ourselves. So we're actually getting better candidates, and we're getting more candidates. So we've been pretty pleased with what we're seeing on that. And pretty pleased, and, and so far, with the latest employees, we've been able to make an offer. The, the salary has not been an issue. One thing that has really helped has been the moving incentives that we have, the relocation incentives that we have put in. That's been a big help. And so, yeah, it's a factor, but I wouldn't say it is an overwhelming factor. We, it's, part of what we have simply been dealing with is the fact that we've had people who have been leaving. They've been moving on in their career to other places, which means we have to hire somebody new coming in.
Do you or the chief have other recommendations for ways to improve the recruitment? Whether that be salary, whether that be different bonuses, whether that be we buy them all houses, I mean, whatever?
The, one of the benefits that we have has been our transitional housing. The city owns two homes that we rent out for up to about six months. We've used those with almost every employee that has come in over the last two-plus years. And the benefit is that we're fine with our employees is that if they have to come in here and find a place immediately, it's very difficult. The transitional housing gives them time. I think my example is pretty typical, that people are not finding housing through a traditional manner. Me, I just happened to be driving down the road. Thought I was going to go a different way to come in. And we're here, you know, we're here from employees through word of the mouth. So that transitional housing has been effective. One of the, one of the reasons why we put in the cadet program, and it's a problem that small cities have, and it's not unique to us, is that you have people that are coming to a small community. They're early in their career. They're ambitious. The opportunities for promotion, the opportunities for advancement in their career are very limited, and so we see them go to different locations. The idea behind the cadet program is that you're catching people out that are native to the area prior to when they can actually be a police officer, which is age 21. And then through that cadet program, we've already been able to establish a relationship that hopefully will help it last longer.
Thank you. Anything else on police? Anybody?
The issue about the cadet program? I was checking, I happen to have a new cadet graduate in the family from Portland. And I asked about liability. And she said that they are covered under the city liability, provided they're wearing their vests. And so, I just wanted to make sure that we had included all aspects of liability for these young people as well.
Thank you. I'll make sure we've done, if, if it's approved, I'll make sure we go forward. We'll check on that. The other one that we had that was associated with the police is the dispatch center. We did cover that. Are there any additional questions you'd like to ask on that?
The training has doubled and then some, two and a half times? I was just wondering if that's in regards to the training of the possible new part-time person? Or are your all-staff being certified in something else?
No, that is associated with new staffing, I believe. Okay, where would you like me to go next?
I guess we'd go back to the beginning and go to planning, since if we're going to go alphabetically through the line items, planning, or not alphabetically, I'm sorry, numerically. Apologize.
If we go, if we go according to the way it's laid out in the, in the message, where at municipal court next?
Municipal court.
Municipal court, attorney, and then planning, building for economic development.
Yes. Also, may I make a recommendation that however you organize the line items and the narrative, they be in the same order in each of those? One, it looks like it's, it's alphabetically. And then this one is like some other, I don't know, some other way?
They should be based on their, on their, their numerical accounting number. So, for example, the attorney is 111038, planning is 111041.
Planning. All right, maybe, I don't know how to read it.
It's this number up here.
Oh, okay. That's all right. You don't have to read.
Okay. We, we spoke about municipal court. Is there anything else that you, any other questions you had on that one? Okay, under city attorney, this is page 17 of the budget section of the budget. Expenditures are $13,894 greater than in fiscal year 2017. The one area that I really want to make mention of that, that takes up most of that is under legal services. Based upon some of the lawsuits that we have, are currently in, and looks like they will continue for a little bit longer, we have increased that by $10,000. That is to handle outside attorneys that help to represent the city. I've already mentioned to you that, about the, about the possibility of an administrative assistant for our attorney. I also need to point out that over the weekend, I had received, I think all of you had received, an email from a Mr. Ross Smith. He also asked me if I would print that and, and give it to you. And you have that on your desk in front of you.
Ron, did you have a chance to review what he sent us?
What?
What Mr. Smith sent?
Yes, I have.
I would be interested in hearing any comments you might have specifically about the amount spent compared to other communities on our legal budget.
I have not looked specifically at those other communities to identify how we compare. I don't have a reason at this point to doubt Mr. Smith's numbers. I can tell you that our budget has increased over time. As I've looked at the past 10 years, there have been a couple of significant things that have caused the increase. The first of those is when we went to an in-house attorney. And instead of a contract attorney, that increased it. Then you have the costs associated with having in-house employees. We still have had some cases where we have still needed outside attorneys to represent the city in different cases. Depending on the nature of what is going on with the city, that has caused some increase. And then, of course, the request that you've seen for this year. But yes, there, there has been, over the last 10 years, we have had a fairly steady increase, with a big jump when we went to in-house, and then a fairly steady increase after that.
Did we go to in-house in 2010?
No. 2013, 14.
Yes, I think that's when it was.
Looks like in 20, again, I'm just looking at these numbers that Mr. Ross sent. But it looks like in 2009, we in Newport were pretty parallel on legal costs. In 2010, we took a huge jump. And that has continued to climb probably more rapidly than any of the other markets.
If I can, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I, I think that's a, a good observation. If you remember those times, there were a number of big issues going on. Annexation would be one. VRDs would be two. And I, I think you add that. The other I might note, prior to the hiring in 2013, 2014, full-time, we had a contract attorney with specific hours. And you can see the specific hours were, you know, stayed to. So part of the, the thinking was higher productivity, more, more things went into play because we had an in-house attorney. And quite frankly, we've taken on much more aggressive modes. A, a good one would be not settling lawsuits and challenging them. So we're in court also, lost my train of thought. But it, but just being, changing a tune, attitude, that the city would just cave. And so, we kind of held our ground finally on some code enforcement things and other stuff to kind of set the tone, so. To me, when, when you take a look at the budget, you know, you pick a number of what you want to spend on attorney fees. The outside, or whatever it's called, legal services is more the specialist guys when we go after things. But it's, it's much more productive of our results and productivity.
Thank you. If, if the employee wellness is membership fees, is it $739 per year to go to the community center? So I would hope that it's not just...
Is that in the city attorney budget?
City attorney.
On page 17.
It includes massage.
Also, with the information that Mr. Smith provided, it states normalized with, normalized, what is that? Forgive me for my ignorance. But when you normalize something by population, what does that even mean?
I don't know.
One, one additional clarification on the employee wellness. It does if there are family members that are members as well.
Okay.
What's the cost for that?
Okay, thank you.
So it could be more than one person.
Okay, thank you. And in regards to the information normalized by population?
Where are you getting that?
This is from Mr. Smith's information, that all of his, all of his information is based upon a normalized by population.
I think what he means is like per capita.
You think that's what he means?
I know.
I don't, I mean, you're certain?
No.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Because I would like to, I mean, if we're going to submit this...
Well, we appreciate his input.
Well, sure.
So, you know, thank you.
Other information? No? Oh, it's a...
There is, so there's some information that... Okay, so one of the things that I have done with all of our expenditures is looked at them over the last 10 years to, to identify what the costs were and what were associated with those. So looking at, and I've, and, and, and part of looking at that is looking at it in different ways. So, for example, you have to adjust for inflation, okay? You also, one of the ways I've looked at, at, at all of our costs is on a per capita basis. You often hear somebody who says, you know, when I worked for the city, we only had four employees. Well, there was only 100 people in the city at the time. And so, what should remain a fairly constant, though, are the costs per capita. And so, I have done that with all of our expenditures that we have. And we had a contract employee from, from 2007 to 2012, or 2012. Our budget ranged from $137,545 to $162,000. Now, when you try to equalize that through a per capita cost, okay? Our budget was $18 in 2007, per capita for, for the legal fees. And in 2012, it was $20, okay? With the peak being in 2011, and of $22. When you look from 2013, our budget has been from $183,459 to this current budget, which is $235,612. And the per capita expense has been from $23 per capita to $27 per capita. The high being 2016, which was $28, the low being 2015, which was $21 per capita. So again, as I mentioned, when you look at the graph, we've had both, at the time before, we had a full-time attorney. And as a full-time attorney under both cases, we've had a, the trend has been upward.
And just to make sure that we're talking about $162,000 in salary? And that we're talking about $235,000 total?
Yes, you're talking about the, you know, when you look at 2012, almost all the cost, about $6,000 less, was for a contracted legal services. When you're looking at, from that point on, you're looking at employee costs. You still look at some legal services, but it's significantly lower. As I mentioned, this budget includes $40,000 for additional legal services. And then you have other costs such as information technology, meetings, membership dues, supplies, and so forth. And so, the, and so, the, you know, the, when you, when you ask these kind of questions, ultimately, what you're asking is a level of service question, okay? And that's the one that you, and especially the city council, has to determine is for what we are spending. And I'm, and I'm not even going to just use our attorney. I'm going to, this runs throughout the whole budget. For whatever budget money, a dollar amount you're spending, are you satisfied with the level of service that you're receiving for that? If you say yes, great. If you say no, I like the service, the level of service, but I think we're paying too much, or, you know, then that sends us down a different road. If you say no, we're not getting the level of service for the amount that we're paying, and we should contract it, then that sends you down a different road. But ultimately, what you're, what you're asking yourself for any of these budgets is are you satisfied with the level of service that you are receiving for the money that you're spending?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chandler? Have you or staff verified any of this data that we've received from Mr. Smith?
No.
Thank you.
No, we just got this over the weekend.
Okay. So that would move us to planning? Is that what we're doing now?
What is this?
Did I finally get it right?
Planning, yes, sir.
Yay! See, because that's where, that's where I get mixed up.
Okay.
Hunter, come on up. You get to answer the hard questions.
Okay, the plan, well, Richard's coming up. Under planning, the total budget is $674,270, which is $52,324. seventy dollars, which is fifty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars, or eight point four percent greater. Salary, there is actually a decrease, and that's due to the consolidation of, of the HR receptionist position into, into administration. Couple of points to bring out before we turn it over to you for questions. There's a ninety-five thousand dollars for the comprehensive plan under, under contracted services, and fifty thousand dollars for architectural consultant for commercial design, and twenty-five thousand dollars for a consultant for the villages plan. It also includes ten thousand dollars for a landscape architect for the southeast Keel Park, which Council Hinton has referred to as the Deborah Park. And then there is five thousand dollars for survey for Devil's Point Workforce Housing Site, and I'll have Mr. Townsend explain a little bit more about those.
One thing I should say is that while the budget shows an increase in contracted services, I think it looks like a substantial increase of actually about seventy-five thousand dollars of that is carried over from the current year. So it's, it's not as much as it looks like. But the, the consultants for the comprehensive plan update, that's fifty thousand dollars is carrying over for that from the current one principally because we got off to a later start than we expected to. So we won't be spending the money this year, we go into the, into the next fiscal year. And that's for the visioning in particular, the visioning process, which actually we have first meeting between staff and the consultants next week, and then we'll go out into the committee right after that.
If I may stop you, that's your earmarked, earmarked fifty thousand dollars?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
This visioning is for your earmarked fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
So, but we're, I'm not clear how we're, that was part of the sixty thousand dollars that?
Sixty, what was?
What was? So they had fifty thousand, of that fifty thousand, not of this one? Okay. There's two fifty thousand dollars, I got confused. Thanks. I got you. Okay, thanks.
Then, we, we put in a proposal for fifty thousand dollars for architectural consultant for commercial design standards. What that is about, we have commercial design standards for Taft zoning area, for Ocean Lake, a separate set, for Nelskot, a separate set, and then a separate, a fourth set for everywhere else that's commercial. I've been dissatisfied with how those have worked, and also just how they're presented in the zoning ordinance. And I think it would be good to have, have those redone, and in particular, do it with the assistance of an architect who knows the ins and outs of how that profession works and how good design works.
Can you explain further your dissatisfaction?
The ones that we have are, can be hard to understand. They're, they can be pretty vague, and at times even contradictory. And I would just like to make things easier for people to be able to understand, even for staff to be able to understand that some places it's, it's hard to figure out what were we really trying to do there.
In that, in that sense, and you would be the one interpreting this to the businesses?
To the public. The staff interprets it to the public, but also, or helps the, the public to interpret it. And it would, like, again, as I said, I think it would be good to have a design professional involved in preparing this so they know we have a better, a better set of standards that are clearer to those who have to do design.
And that wouldn't be able to go through the planning commission to re, reword those?
It will go through the planning commission. It has to go through the planning commission. But I don't think the expertise is there, the necessary expertise. It's not, it's not with staff, and that's not saying anything about the planning commission, it's just saying we need someone with architectural expertise.
Okay, I mean.
Then, we've got twenty-five thousand dollars consultant for the villages plan. That's a carryover of twenty-five thousand dollars from the current fiscal year. And that is a contract we have entered into for a new preliminary master plan for the villages of Cascade, Cascadehead Project, looking at how we, to make it, make it more realistic than what we have, I've talked to you, but talked to the council about this before, that the plan we have is very outdated, and, because it was, it was from nineteen ninety, ninety-eight was the last time it was updated, updated in a comprehensive way. And it does not reflect current economic realities, nor did it ever, as it turns out, reflect engineering realities. So.
Good catch.
So we want to try to make it, make it realistic. And it actually doesn't reflect current sort of political realities in the sense, or policy realities in the sense that it never really addressed things like workforce housing. And so we want to make sure that that's, that's incorporated fully into it as well. Then I have a fifteen thousand dollars as matching funds for a grant if needed. That's totally undefined. What we've had to do in the past, when we've found a grant opportunity that requires matching funds, we've had to scramble on where can we scrounge the money from? How much of our own work can we, can we contribute as, as in-kind contributions and such? This is just if the opportunity comes up, we want to have something in the budget to be able to say we can go forward.
Do you, do you have like a, a set limit you can spend on? Is that what that fifteen thousand dollars would be?
Fifty thousand dollars.
You, you have like a spending limit? Is that something that you have? You personally, like how Mr. Chandler has, he can approve of something up to a certain amount?
I can spend five hundred.
Okay. Well, good to know, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can.
Thank you. Yeah, yes, Mr. Ward.
Mr. Townsend, on your, on your consultants, the one, you, we're all over the board, Council, as we come together trying to figure out policy decisions regarding land use. So when you get a consultant, you're redoing something, how do you work that around without ending up making a policy?
Well, what will happen is it, it has, anything that's on here has to go through the planning commission and then through the city council. So it's, it's not gonna be like staff setting policy. We'd make recommendations, and it's up to the planning commission then to make a recommendation to the city council, and the city council to make a decision.
I, I understand that, it's just that as they're designing things, they have to have information to make a decision, what goes here and what goes there. And that answer isn't, comes down the road when the council debates and everybody figures out.
Well, we can have a, a process where, we can have a workshop or whatever thing, but where, where do you want us to head? And we can make sure we head in that direction.
Okay, that was all.
Just like Debbie said, you don't have to spend all that two hundred thousand dollars, that's just.
See, I got him well-trained.
Yeah, I, hey, I'm learning.
Like last year, we didn't, we didn't, or this current year, we didn't come close to spending, and, and we've been real conservative on, on these things, so I've been fairly proud of that. Then we have a five thousand dollars for a survey for the Devil's Point Workforce Housing Site. Devil's Point is probably a bad name for it, it's the property up by the Curtis Park, up behind the SDA Church, and city council, we talked about a little bit earlier today. But it's just to, this is a potential area for the city to actually provide workforce housing for its own employees, as, and possibly with, working with a hospital, and possibly a school district for their employees. And the survey is just to, to pin down exactly what the boundaries of it are, and exactly what the topography is, so that engineering design can be based on as good of information as possible. That's what we've got in, in services.
Yes.
Do you have some money set aside in your budget to do the planning for Deborah's Park?
For what?
Deborah's Park.
Yeah, we, actually that, I'm sorry, I skipped that. There's a ten thousand dollars for a landscape architect for that. Thank you for catching.
Question? Yes, sir. If I'm hearing you correctly, following the math correctly, the two hundred thousand dollars, ninety-five thousand, that is about the visioning project?
Ninety-five thousand dollars is for the comprehensive plan update. And there's twenty-five thousand for the villages plan. Over and above what would be spent this year, which will probably be about, it would be about an equal amount.
Do we have any more comprehensive studies that we need to complete or update?
Maybe. I've, I've, I've got, of that ninety-five thousand, thousand dollars for the comprehensive plan update, there's a forty-five thousand dollars in there. It's kind of vague exactly how that will be used, and it's, it's, I, I described it in the budget message as helping to translate some of that inventory information, that background information into policies, policies and practices. But it can also, if it turns out it's more important to do it on information gathering and studying, then we'll have that in there.
Thank you. Any other committee members have anything for planning? Question?
Yes, sir.
On the not, not well-named Devil's Point project, so assuming the survey gets done, what's the next step and how, what's the funding process look for that?
If, if the decision is made that the city should proceed in some form or other with developing that property, then it would be to, to come up with a, a, a plan for the property, including engineering of the infrastructure, the sewer and water lines and internal roadways and that sort of thing, and stormwater.
That's still a, a year or two away from actually being part of, being part of planning, actually planning.
Yeah, probably. Also, it is, it probably can be done in-house. Talking with the city engineer about it, we review those things when they're done by private individuals, if we're capable of reviewing them, or certainly capable of doing them too.
Thank you. Do you like that?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Townsend. I don't think we have any more questions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Townsend, perhaps I, I missed it, but we've got code enforcement expense zeroed out. Is that moving to another department?
Now, that was zeroed out years ago. Code enforcement, of course, is in the police department now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The next one is building inspection.
Building?
We're, yes, we're ready to do building inspection. The bud, so we contract our services for our building inspector, and the, this budget essentially goes up and down with the level of activity that we have with our, with our, with our building in town. We do have one employee, well, and parts of Richard's time that is tied into the salaries, that you'll see that. But the largest expense is in the contracted services. We have a hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars is budgeted for the building department is the group that we contract with. Essentially, this budget is remaining the same.
And that contracted services item, it's just automatically seventy-five percent of what, what we get in, we pay out to the, to the people that actually do the planning views and building inspections.
So this would be accounting for permit costs and that sort of thing, where does that show up? I take it that's the money in you're talking about, that seventy-five percent goes out? So where, does it show up in the budget somewhere as revenue?
Shows up as revenue.
They're on page six.
Page back.
Yeah. There's a line item called building permits, another line item called mechanical permits, and then the third is plan check. And those three comprise.
If we're paying seventy-five percent of what we get, a hundred and one thousand dollars is less than a hundred and forty-eight thousand.
You have to add the three together. There's a hundred and one thousand, there's another twenty-seven thousand under mechanical permits.
Mechanical, okay, so hold on.
And then sixty-nine thousand is site plan review.
All of that is?
One oh one, eight hundred.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Townsend. Mr. Townsend. What sort of reports do you hear from contractors regarding the services provided by the building inspector?
They've been very happy with the inspector that we have now. They're extremely happy with him, is what I hear.
Thank you. The total of those.
The main concern we always hear is they wish we could approve things faster.
Right, that's what I've heard as far as.
The total of those revenues was one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and ten dollars.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Townsend, you also met with a number of contractors regarding the speed of processing, didn't you?
Yeah, we, we met with, I guess, three groups of contractors about building department issues in general. And most of their concerns were minor, and they had a lot of praise for the building inspector that we have now, for the, for the people we have. There were some things like fine tuning our forms and that kind of stuff. And again, the, the principal thing was trying to figure out how to get things through the whole system faster. We're, we're not slow in the largest sense, but, you know, we could always be faster. And unfortunately, right now with, as building permit activity picks up, having people who are capable of doing plan reviews and that kind of thing, it's proving to be hard, hard to do. During the recession, a lot of people left that field, and the field has not ratcheted back up as fast as it needs to. So I know that the company that we contract with, Northwest Code Professionals, is scrambling to find people who can do it. It's, it's, it's not real simple, but we're trying hard to make sure things happen as, as timely as we can do it.
Thank you.
I recently was tour to building, a commercial building, and he had nothing but good things to say. So, I mean, he was totally happy with speed, friendliness, professionalism. I mean, he was gushing as, as his happiness. He was really remarkable, and I was like, really? So he was really, really happy.
Yeah, thank you. What we hear from people is that they like that our inspector is solution-oriented. What can we do to solve this issue?
He spoke very highly of him.
Any other questions on building inspection? The next one we have is economic development. This is not a new expense, but it's actually a reallocation of work and how it is accounted. One of the things that, one of the things that we have been working towards is in the area of economic development beyond what we do through the marketing plans of the VCB. And the employee that we're tasking for this duty is our urban renewal agency director, Allison Robertson. And up until now, all of her time has been associated with just the urban renewal district. That accounts for eighteen percent of the city in its entirety. We want her to expand her efforts to go beyond just the urban renewal district for economic development activities, which means that the general fund has to share the cost. Now, we had two ways of, of approaching this. One is that we could simply increase the cost of transfers from the. One is that we could simply increase the cost of transfers from the general fund to the urban renewal fund, or that we can simply make it a clean break and, and, and just apply it in the general fund. It's simple that way, it's all computerized in the accounting. And so, what this reflects is that of the urban renewal agency time that will be associated with, that will be associated with economic development will now be coming out of the general fund. Now, there is one very big expense that I want to mention to you, and that is, if you're looking on page twenty-one of your budget, it is item number six-two-seven-zero-one-five-zero, economic development programs for a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Two weeks ago, I mentioned to you that we were looking at having a million dollars of revenues in excess of expenditures in the general fund, and I wanted to use those on one-time expenditures. We've had a tremendous amount, or we've had success with our toolbox program in the urban renewal development area. We wanted to expand the ability to use those toolbox tools, which are the loan and grant programs, but for me specifically, the loan programs, to help and aid businesses and other economic development outside of the urban renewal, outside or inside the urban renewal district. So, this budget proposes adding a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to that economic development toolbox. Now, what makes these funds unique is, as I mentioned, it gives Allison the ability to use those funds within and without of the, of the urban renewal district, wherever the need may be on that.
This is the second place I recall that there was an increase to the economic development program or the urban renewal toolbox. Is that correct?
In urban renewal agency budget, I, did we increase that? I don't believe we did.
I don't, I don't think we've made that.
We did. We've had, we've had the discussion associated with the next bond issuance that will be done, that will be made, and the urban renewal agency board will have to make that decision. We've had that discussion quite a bit, but I do believe.
There's no other location in this budget that's moving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the urban renewal economic development kit or this economic development program?
I'll check for certain, but I don't believe so. I'll double check on that, but I don't believe so.
And line item six-five-seven-zero-one-five-zero, economic development loan programs, a hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah, yeah, there, I believe that there was another one, another transfer, for some reason. And it could be that other urban renewal agency.
You mean in the urban renewal budget itself?
I was looking in it, and I didn't find it, and I know we've already closed that, so.
I, I will, I will double check to make sure.
But it just seemed like there was another, another hundred and fifty thousand. So, this is also something that we can discuss if we want to create, not create, but fund the economic development.
Yes, yes. If, if, for example, you were to say no to this, then all of the efforts of our urban renewal agency staff would be just in the urban renewal district.
Yes, Judy.
I, I don't know where this would go, if it would go in the economic development program, but I want to make sure with the suggestion of keeping in mind that we, we have an interest in broadband internet, and somewhere in there, we might have some money to do a feasibility study, to look at infrastructure packages, to, you know, look at access affordability, local solutions. I've been in touch with independents who work through Next Century Cities, and I do have some information on that, you know, regarding costs, but I, I hope that would be included in there as well.
Yeah, the, the actual programs haven't been determined, but this allows for citywide, rather than urban renewal district-wide, it would allow for whatever programs or direction the council would decide.
So, this could be included in, in the economic development part?
I think I found your other hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which isn't different, it's just in a different place, it's in the narrative, maybe on page four.
Right. General fund transfer.
Yeah, there is, there is in the urban renewal property rehab program fund, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for economic development loan programs.
Total influx, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and five thousand dollars.
We have traditionally budgeted about seventy-five thousand dollars for that rehab, the urban renewal economic development loan program. We increased it by seventy-five thousand dollars. This hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the general fund, the difference is that it would be allowed to be used outside of or inside of the district.
How likely, I guess, is this a way to transition from the urban renewal sunsetting to not having an urban renewal district at all, and just this would be the city's urban renewal district called the economic development program?
It could, but we are not proposing that we not have another urban renewal district. The other part of the proposal that we are making with the, with the agency board is the creation of a new district.
Right. So, there's.
Yeah, with economic development, as you know, urban renewal is an economic development tool, and economic development is much broader than urban renewal, and we'll be talking more about that on the fifteenth with the council work session, but this would allow the city to have more focus on economic development other than what urban renewal is doing.
Outside of it.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, given this relatively new department, I, I guess, was an oversight, because I always think of economic development with some marketing and travel dollars, and don't see that in this cost center, and wondered if it needed to have some.
That's a good point.
One for me.
This is a good point, doesn't it? It's right.
The, the other question, Mr. Chair, the glass studio?
Yes, sir.
Helping.
Why is it here?
Yeah. Are we, is this in anticipation?
That was the other one, is why is one in one spot and one in the other?
Yeah, I think, I think we talked about that, the properties will transfer over to the city rather than the urban renewal ownership, and so, any revenue or maintenance would come out of this.
Okay, so that's in anticipation of it transferring over? Okay.
The numbers are off. One's eighteen thousand, four fifty, and the other one's twenty thousand, five forty.
So, there's not necessarily a direct correlation between what you spend to maintain it versus the rent that you charge. You could make an, you know, you could arbitrarily make that, but we haven't. It's a good question, though.
Hey.
Do you, do you want to spend more than what we?
Mine does not say finance director, just to be clear.
Mr. Chair. It's my understanding that the cultural center budget left the urban renewal was included in the general fund budget of the city?
That property is also.
Is that where, is that where we're getting it now?
That property is also being transferred to the city from the urban renewal.
Is that that ten thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
And the building improvements?
Building improvements could be for any, any city or urban renewal-owned building that is, falls under the category of economic development. I think in, in this case, it would be anticipated for improvements needed on the glass studio building, but it could be another building, if the city had another building, which I think it does have, you know, other buildings. Any building improvements for city buildings that would be in economic developments hat.
Add enough? I was gonna say. Five thousand dollars isn't very, you can't do very many improvements. Can we add that to the list? Because it came before us, before.
I would love to see it higher.
Yeah, so, could you please? Rod, maybe look at that.
But I'm not the budget officer.
I might point out one thing on the economic development programs, that this is coming out of the funds which I've identified should be a one-time expense. So, it's, so we're not trying to create this to be an ongoing expense. The nice thing about the loan programs that we've discussed is that ultimately, over time, they have a chance to repay themselves as the loans are paid off and be reused, and so you end up with that multiplier effect where one dollar eventually turns into four dollars of, as it's recycled through the system, so.
Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. So, back on, on your notation of non, making a capital expense, the one-time, one-time spending of a, of a million dollars?
Right.
Okay. So, my question, I guess, would be, is these five, one, two, three, four, five targets, how many, how do you feel about these being in sync with the goals that we set earlier tonight?
You know, that's a very good question.
Talked about setting.
That's a very good question. Ultimately, so, let me come back to how we came up with those, those items. Normally, I would have the opportunity to discuss those with you and find the general sense of where you want to go with them before we actually prepare the budget, but I'm not permitted to do that, to talk to the budget committee to try to do that. So, we looked at, at those, that million dollars and asked ourselves, where is the best place for that to be spent, and for this discussion to be a starting point and not an ending point, okay? I fully expected that by the time we finish, that million dollars may be divvied up differently than what we have identified, but I needed a starting point in order to, to have this discussion. The part on economic development, I think that fits very well. The part on street improvements, I think that fits very well. The one that I was most curious about was what I had put in for art. We have an arts committee right now that is in the process of creating an arts master plan for the city, and, and they will be finished by the end of the year. We have twenty-seven thousand dollars in that fund. I really didn't want us to be in a position of saying, great, thanks, we'll see in five years when we have enough money that we can actually do something with it. That would buy about three feet of a six-foot-high statue, okay? Generally, a statue is going to cost you somewhere between fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars for a bronze statue. So, I put into there two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the idea that that would give us the ability to implement some, at least some of the art plan. Now, whether or not that's the right amount, I don't know. I needed a number to start with, and so that's where I put it. And so, like I said, the idea behind all of this was to start the discussion about where it should go, not necessarily for it to be the end of the discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. Because we've jumped back to that, which is where I wanted to bring a couple ideas in.
Where? Hold on. What are we talking about?
We're talking about that million dollars.
Page four or five.
Let me find the page to send a message.
Page four or five. Whoa.
I have something.
Yes.
If, do you have new things you want to add?
Well, I want to, I want to just go through my list, which I was trying to do earlier, or closer to that. Can I do it now? I don't want to leave tonight before I say these things, so.
Can I do it now? I'm going to do it now.
Okay, I'm gonna do it now. I'm taking two, three, and four, well, there's five of them. The first one, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think should go to the economic development toolbox. Number five, which is a street overlay, I think that fits perfectly, and like you said, Mr. Chandler, those, the three in the middle are a little bit iffy, so I have some ideas. Which are this? The library safety features, that's a one-time purchase of about eighty-five hundred dollars. And then the safety cameras, that I think was Counselor Ward's idea, anyway, library, third floor, fourth floor, employee parking, and I would add the garage. Like I said, I've seen drug deals going on down there. And that, I, I used your estimates in there and then bumped it up, so a total of thirty thousand dollars for that. And then, and this I've brought up before, but I'm just gonna say it more forcefully this time. Here in the chamber, new cameras upgrade the system for the recording and the producing and the band, and the whole, whole shebang. It's kind of outdated, I think. And so, I'm guessing, what, a hundred thousand dollars, seventy-five? I don't know, you tell me.
I actually think I have an estimate on that, and I can bring that back.
Okay. And then, also, vehicle, a purchase of a vehicle for the Parks and Outdoor Recreation Director position. Those are all one-time purchases.
If, could the wayfinding signs and the sign entrance be funded from the VCB? I'm thinking about that. I can't remember.
Some of it, but not all of it.
Yeah, could we look in?
They, they fall more along the lines of, of street maintenance than they really do of VCB activities, but there may be a little bit. Most of it would have to go through, would not be able to go through using those TRT funds.
Same thing with public art?
Depends on the public art, but yes. Some, perhaps some of it could go through VCB, others would not be able to. For example, Ann Hall with the museum sent me some fantastic photos of benches in parks that have been made into artwork. They are just really wonderful. You would not be able to use VCB funds for that, you would have to use other funding.
And if I may, if I've done my math correctly, the list that I just gave you was only a hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred, so there's a lot left over for art and all the other things.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Ward, go through. Mr. Chandler, could you, could you explain a little bit about the wayfinding signs? It seems to me we have a ton of signs everywhere. What are they?
It's actually, it would be a little bit of consolidating some, replacing some, and creating new, new signs. These, in the, in the destination report that we refer to as the Brooks Report, it highlights a lot about when you come into the city, that the signage is very confusing about how to find different locations within the city, whether you're walking or whether you're, or whether you're driving. It also talks about how it's, it's, the signage that we do have doesn't have much pizzazz associated with it. This wayfinding sign would be able to identify features within our community. It could be parking, it could be parks, it could be museums, it could be a variety, it could be a variety of different things that would create a uniform look and would also kind of enrich the, what it looks like as well.
I just have another suggestion, too. I had mentioned that, like it's done deal, but anyway, the parks, I'll keep going in that direction. The Parks and Outdoor Recreation Director, if you take the car out of there, which was twenty-eight thousand, then that leaves a hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and fifty, and is that something that we could fund from the, from the tribe's contribution to our general fund? I mean, if we're looking for a place to pay for these things, I've thought I found one.
So, any expenditure that you're adding, you, you have, you need to do one of two things, or one of three things. You need to either add a new revenue, you need to reduce an expenditure, or you need to reduce your ending projected fund balance. So, if you say, can we add the hundred and eight thousand dollars? Yes. But you then have to identify what you're going to reduce, which could be another expenditure reduce, which could be another expenditure, or you could reduce your ending fund balance.
However, where was it where you were saying that we had, how much?
We have to keep 6.8 million. We are budgeted for 8.7.
The, the amount that we have identified that we want to keep as a rainy day fund is 6 million.
Right.
The unappropriated fund balance that you're looking at is about 6.8 million.
There you go.
So, again, okay. Now, the, the other thing that we will get to on this, that's also important, is to look at the forecasting for the next few years. And we'll come to that. Because the, an ongoing expenditure doesn't just affect this year, it affects permanently. And, and so whether or not you want to go that way, that's fine. But you do owe it to yourself to look at how, what it does to the budgets in two to three, four, five years.
Yeah, if we wanted to hold a balance of 1.7 million in contingency, I mean, I mean, that's, that's the amount.
Sure.
Back to the Urban Renewal General Fund, I have a, with the economic development, they both have part-time positions for the exact same amount, 10,910. Those are two different people, or are we also going to do something similar where they work both? And that person's position is actually 21,800.
The two people that are in Urban Renewal this year, and the proposed budget are split 50-50 between the General Fund Economic Development and the Urban Renewal General Fund?
So, there are two, we're, we're looking at two people.
There's one, there's one full-time and one part-time. And then, there is a partial allocation of my salary to the Urban Renewal Fund that stays in there. And so, that's why it's not exactly the same.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Pardon me, Mr. Chandler, you may have covered this already, but on the page, bottom of page 21, building improvements, 12,000. What building is that for?
I don't believe it was.
Down three doors.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's some capital needs for the Glass Studio building, and the 12,000 is anticipated for that.
And we did mark down if we, to increase that amount.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We, we have some properties that we're leasing. And I was, are we, how often do we renegotiate those leases?
Like?
All right. Can I repeat that? I'm sorry.
Talking about the houses or the business properties?
No, we, well, the Glass Studio was one that we, we leased to. I think Moe's is another one that we leased.
They all have different expiration dates under the case of both the Culture Center and the Glass Studio. We're in those negotiations now. And expecting to have something before the City Council by, in June.
Okay, so that, if, I'm assuming there'll be something different, but it won't be reflected in this budget?
Not until we actually, not until we actually get.
Same thing with Moe's, I guess it is?
Moe's is, I think we have another five years there before that one becomes up for renewal.
How, how long was that lease for?
Oh, it's been very long. I could send you the details of it. We're at a point right now where it's talking, where there's a formula for creating the rent amount, which we're working on. But the actual expiration date, I don't think it's for another five years. It, it had renewal clauses in from the original one. And so, it's, it's been a while, but I don't remember the original date.
So, it incrementally adjusts?
It does, uh, it does about every five years, I think, is when it has the adjustments.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Welcome back.
Hi, thank you.
Ron, could I, could the committee get a list of all properties that the city leases?
Sure.
Or did Mr. Ward name them all off?
Um, he may have, but I'll make sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we can get that for you. No, I don't think, I don't think he named them all.
What would be the line item that that income would be?
Under, on page eight. There is a land lease line item, 4601050, that has some of them.
Land lease, about halfway down on page eight.
So, most of them are. And then, it was the Glass Studio that you had seen earlier.
Right. is there difference in pay? How do you value, and if we're going to use another employee for Ms., for the recorder, and for those employees that have a defined dual purpose? One, how do you manage that? Do you say, whoop, this is my 10 hours, and it's Tuesday, and then that person doesn't work for that department anymore? And, you know, what happens if they need more than that 10 hours?
Let me start with, answer that by starting with the salaries. We do look to find the salaries that are associated with the duties. And we do try to define the duties to be similar. So, for example, a clerk in position one is the same as the clerk in position two. We do, however, have a couple of employees, not very many, where their duties are different enough that they're paid at two separate salaries. And, and as far as how many hours that we, we allocate, most of that is going to be based on experience and estimating time for, from the employees. So, for example, much of Debbie's salary is allocated between many funds. So, each year she estimates how much time she is spending on each of those funds, and we built it in that way. Historically, they have not changed much from year to year. But that's, that's essentially how we do that.
And then, to follow that, how do you have a full-time director for the Urban Renewal up until this year? And now, we say, well, next year on, it's only a half-time position. And then, also, creating a full-time position in economic development with that same person?
Actually, don't, in the way this is structured now, you have a full-time employee that splits her time doing different, different jobs. So, part of her work is associated with the Urban Renewal District, and part of her work is associated with the economic development. Prior to Allison's promotion, we had a, her job as an assistant was full-time, and the director was part-time. We switched that so that now she is, she is, the director is full-time, and the assistant is part-time. Whether or not any type of, any employee such as Allison is going to be able to handle both those jobs, time will tell. And if she's unable to do that, then we'll have to address that at another time. But for the time being, I think that she's capable and will be able to devote the time to these, to both these types of work without, without sacrificing them.
I'd also just like to mention that the, the nature of Urban Renewal has changed over the last few years as our, as we kind of close out this district. So, whereas we used to be all capital infrastructure, and we had our facade loan program, over time, we've added more economic development tools and have taken on kind of a different character of Urban Renewal. And just, for example, like, the idea of exploring other Urban Renewal districts for the city. Urban Renewal staff can only do that for so much as exploring, but can't actually do that if, if it were decided to be done. The city would actually have to do that activity. So, there's some overlap with what I'm already doing and what I will be doing. Another example would be the property maintenance. If the roof leaks on one of the buildings, it would be a city building rather than an Urban Renewal building, and it can be more properly addressed.
All right. Where are we at next? Recreation?
Okay, we are at Recreation.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Oh, sure.
I was under assumption that there's revenue that is dedicated for, is that correct?
Revenue that is dedicated to?
For art?
For art, yes.
Does that come out of TRT?
Um, it's, it's, um, capital projects that we, as the city, do. And so, for example, on the water fund or the sewer fund, you'll see a line item that says transfer to a percent of arts fund. And that's, it's just, it's a percent of projects.
I guess my question was, is if we have a tax dedicated already for the 250, is that an additional?
Yes. The 250 would be on top of what's going in there. We haven't had a great deal of money going in the last few years.
Is there a list of art that we have purchased for the city, or can there be one created?
We have it in our fixed asset system, sure. Would you like the list?
Oh, well, it might, do I have it already?
No, but I could, I could run one for you next time if you'd like.
Oh, I mean, if you can just print it, you know.
Sure, it's just a report.
Just do some more stuff.
Actually.
It would be good, I mean, it would be good to see.
Actually.
People to know.
Actually, if I may?
Sure.
I was just going to say, maybe we should just invite the, the Arts Committee in to tell us where they are with all their inventory and everything.
I think you probably want to do that as a city council, not necessarily as a Budget Committee.
Right. That's what I was just finished with, as city council.
Thank you.
Can we take a leg stretch break here? Yeah, let's do that. Five minutes. Recession, please? Okay.
You're in charge. Yeah, let's have a recess.
Thank you.
On record?
Not yet. Should be on.
Oh, okay. Is it working?
We're on record, yes. Okay. We would like to pause with the budget message itself and open the floor up to public comments. As advertised as such, so let's, keeping in mind that, I guess the meeting's going to end at 8:45. We just want to have the opportunity for public to comment. So...
not maybe young enough to, to, uh, realize a, a change in my dream from, from independent to multi-unit, but it makes a lot of sense for the city and for me to think in that direction, for, uh, to, to, for a house close by, and regardless of how it's funded or anything. And it's, and I'm looking at a, a kind of a long-term, because of the, because of the amount of work and everything involved, uh, it, it would have to be, it'd probably have to be a, a planned, planned out, uh, the street versus the sewer connection. The, the, I've worked with the city, uh, when we were, when they're doing Highway 101, the sewer, the city gave me a, a clean out at the bottom of, bottom of my property, I'm right next to that Ripley's Believe It or Not sign, and they gave me a clean out to, to reach it. And I've talked to City Works, uh, the Works Department for several times. Eventually, they decided, instead of having, having me run, go down the hill, or, or, or me granting the city an easement with a manhole on Bard Road, that they'd rather go a pumping system, you know, and just because the, the road is actually higher than, than all the houses, and regardless, on each side, it's about 10 to 20 feet, there's no gravity flow there, except for me down to 101 for the neighborhood. You know, so it's me, 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 me and the neighborhood going down the hill, or the city wanting everybody to pump up to Bard Road, I mean, it's one or the other. You know, so it's, uh, it's, so it's been like that for years. And, uh, I just, uh, with the park the way it is, and, uh, and, uh, the, the money that's been spent, you know, lately on, on West Devil's Lake Road, on that bridge, and everything's been in the paper, uh, I mean, uh, to me, to me, it could have been handled a little better, you know, financially, getting something started on Bard Road, you know, and, and, you know, but that's just my opinion. And, uh, but I think that, uh, it's, it's a good investment, being only a mile from the city hall. And, um, it's the only thing I can, uh, all the other streets around here, at least they're pay, you know, they're blacktop, even if there's no sidewalk or curb or anything. And, uh, but the thing is, it needs, to actually develop the area, I can't get away from the, from the, from the sewer prod, and that, that runs a bill up. So I, I figure with everything already kind of cut and dried, you know, with, with your planning and everything, that it'd have to be maybe a, you know, a lo, longer-term process. But I'd just like to see something positively done after all these years. I appreciate the time to comment.
Absolutely. Thank you for sharing. We appreciate it. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak? We will close public comment and move back to our budget message.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this is in kind of relation to that, and also the budget, but, um, I remember this gentleman speaking before, and so I dug up this Resolution 9101, and it's about the city participating in improving the streets. I don't believe it's ever been used, but, um, when streets were developed in Lincoln City, they were dirt. And so, um, to help people have these dirt streets turned into streets, the city, um, allowed itself to contribute 30% of the total cost of bringing streets up to full city standards, and the adjacent property owners would pay 70% of the cost, that's for local streets. If it's a collector's street, then the city would, um, pay up to 60%. And the property owners would pay 40% of the cost. So maybe, um, Mr. Chandler, this might be something that would be beneficial to look into. It's, uh, Resolution 9101, and it's regarding the policy of the city of Lincoln City relating to financial participation by the city in improving streets within the city. And I think this might even apply to some of those road end streets, and I think Lake Drive and maybe Bard Road.
How much of the city is paved, I suppose, to ask as well? Is there a...
Oh, it doesn't matter. We have 53 miles of paved streets, including roads, and, um...
(inaudible) stoppage?
Five miles of gravel. Okay. That takes us to, um, recreation.
See, here's what doesn't match. It doesn't match now, so I wasn't crazy.
Okay, there's a couple of parts of this budget that I really wish to, to spend some time discussing.
What page of the...
This is on page 20...
Of the narrative.
Eleven.
Eleven of the budget. Eleven of the narrative and page 26 of the, uh, of the, oh, the worksheet. Part that I'd really like to discuss on this is that, first of all, the total budget is $1,190,017, which is $20,460, or 1.7% less. The operational budget, which is the total budget less capital, is $1,140,000, which is $25,281, or 2.2% less than this year's budget. Now, the thing that I really want to, to lead off this discussion is, um, community centers don't pay for themselves. Okay? As far as I know, there isn't a community center in the country that actually pays for itself. Um, but, it is worthwhile to begin to ask yourself, how much of it should it actually pay, versus how much of it should be subsidized? And, um, and so we have been discussing that idea, kicking it around a little bit, and asking ourselves, how much of the, um, how much of the, of the operating expenses should, and should be covered by user fees? Historically, um, the general fund, or the, the community center, has been covering anywhere between, um, 35% on the low, up to about, uh, 43% on the high, with an average of about, about 30, about 40%. This budget, um, it will cover 39.9, or about 40% of the budget. The rest is supported by two, primarily two revenue sources. The first are transfers in from the general fund, and the second are transient room tax revenues. The, um, uh, the transient room tax for this would cover about 23%, and the transfer from the general fund would cover just, uh, just under 37%. So, we, uh, started asking ourselves realistically, what should be our goal, as far as, um, what we should cover, and also looking at it historically. And, um, and so the, the first question that I, that I will pose to you is, that you should consider, as we go through, are you comfortable with where we are, that 60% of the, of the operating expenditures is being supported by taxes, and 40% is being covered by revenues? Or is that ratio off? If you're comfortable with that, you can disregard everything I'm about ready to say. If you're not, then the question becomes, what should be the proper amount? And as Gail and I have talked about this, um, and we have looked at other communities throughout the country, her experience, my experience in other communities, we felt that the overall goal that you should ultimately work towards is about 50%. Somewhere between the 45 to 50% of the operating expenditure should be covered. I mentioned operating, not, which does not include capital. Okay? Um, and so, to do that, um, and to reach that point, would require some adjustments, either adjustments in expenditures or adjustments in, in revenues. Now, as, uh, as Mr. Norikas had asked earlier, where did we start from in these budgets? And we began, uh, again, and Gail began, as she was working on this, was, was at a point of zero. No increase for next year. And she worked off of it from that. So, um, this budget, in anticipation of the idea that we need to increase or decrease the subsidy, uh, that is being carried through the taxes, um, we have, uh, we have proposed in this budget a 10% increase in the community center fees. Okay? We've also looked at a couple of ideas as they pertain to, um, as they pertain to our memberships, and how we sell our memberships. And so I'm gonna let Gail go ahead and discuss those a little bit.
One, um, request that we get on a regular basis is for monthly memberships. Historically, we've only had annual and three-month memberships. And for anyone who wanted anything less, they purchased a 15 or a 10-visit pass. Because of the transient nature of our population, you know, we have a lot of snowbirds, we have a lot of people who, you know, come and go often, we have a lot of part-time residents who maybe spend a month or two here at the most, we're asked all the time for monthly memberships. And so I proposed that in our new fee schedule. The monthly memberships would be sold at, sold at 150% of what an annual membership costs. And we would aim to retain those monthly memberships, either through our software program, which can send automatic renewal notices to customers, and through our member services specialist, Lorie, who just gets on the phone and says, "Hey, your membership is about to expire, we haven't seen you lately, are you coming back? We'd love to have you back." So, um, that's our idea. And we're toying with the idea of doing away with three-month memberships, but I think we could keep them and sell one-month memberships as well. Um, you can see by the graphs on page 11, that three-month memberships are pretty popular. But we would really serve a huge need in the area if we had one-month memberships as well.
Okay, and then looking on, this would be on page, um, 27, going to the worksheets that are associated with this.
Mr. Chair? Ron, while you're looking that up, sorry to interrupt you, but, uh, you probably know this, that the very nice gym over by the golf course, who will remain nameless, you can walk in on a daily basis, and it's five bucks. So I don't know if you wanna consider expanding, um, your fee structure to maybe even daily?
We do offer daily.
Oh, all right, sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, you don't have to be a member to come to the community center, you can just walk in out the street.
Okay, great, thank you.
Why don't you just mention on how it all works, and who you charge?
Sure. So our fees are based on whether you are a, a child, 17 and under, an adult, or a senior citizen, age 62 and older. And then we have our regular fees, and if you are a permanent resident of Lincoln City, you get a discount off of that regular fee. Currently, the majority of our drop-in customers are children, make up about 56% of the people who drop in, and they pay 250, whether they are in city limit or out of the city limit. Where senior citizens make up the majority of our members. And they're about 77% of our memberships.
Yeah, what's the drop-in rate for everybody else?
Uh, for an adult, the regular drop-in fee is $6.
Okay.
And it includes swimming, the gymnasium, the basketball gym, anything you wanna do as long as you're in the building. If you are a per, permanent resident of Lincoln City, for an adult, the drop-in fee is 350.
Didn't know that, I've lived here nine years.
For a senior citizen, the regular drop-in fee is $5. If you're a permanent resident of Lincoln City, it is 3, $3.
Overall, uh, the budget for last year was $1,210,477. The budget for this year is $1,190,017.
And she worked off of it from that. So this budget, in anticipation of the idea that we need to increase or decrease the subsidy that is being carried through the taxes, we have proposed in this budget a ten percent increase in the community center fees. Okay? We've also looked at a couple of ideas as they pertain to our memberships and how we sell our memberships. And so I'm going to let Gail go ahead and discuss those a little bit.
One request that we get on a regular basis is for monthly memberships. Historically, we've only had annual and three-month memberships. And for anyone who wanted anything less, they purchased a fifteen or a ten-visit pass. Because of the transient nature of our population, you know, we have a lot of snowbirds, we have a lot of people who, you know, come and go often, we have a lot of part-time residents who maybe spend a month or two here at the most. We're asked all the time for monthly memberships. And so I propose that in our new fee schedule. The monthly memberships would be sold at one hundred and fifty percent of what an annual membership costs. And we would aim to retain those monthly memberships either through our software program, which can send automatic renewal notices to customers, and through our member services specialist, Lorie, who just gets on the phone and says, hey, your membership is about to expire, we haven't seen you lately, are you coming back? We'd love to have you back. So that's our idea. And we're toying with the idea of doing away with three-month memberships, but I think we could keep them and sell one-month memberships as well. You can see by the graphs on page eleven that three-month memberships are pretty popular, but we would really serve a huge need in the area if we had one-month memberships as well.
Okay. And then looking on, this would be on page twenty-seven, going to the worksheets that are associated with this.
Mr. Chair, Ron, while you're looking that up, sorry to interrupt you, but you probably know this, that the very nice gym over by the golf course, who will remain nameless, you can walk in on a daily basis and it's five bucks. So I don't know if you want to consider expanding your fee structure to maybe even daily.
We do offer daily.
Oh, all right, sorry. I missed that.
Yeah, you don't have to be a member to come to the community center. You can just walk in out the street.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Why don't you just mention how it all works and who you charge?
Sure. So our fees are based on whether you are a child, seventeen and under, an adult, or a senior citizen, age sixty-two and older. And then we have our regular fees, and if you are a permanent resident of Lincoln City, you get a discount off of that regular fee. Currently, the majority of our drop-in customers, our children, make up about fifty-six percent of the people who drop in, and they pay two-fifty, whether they are in city limit or out of the city limit, where senior citizens make up the majority of our members. They're about seventy-seven percent of our memberships.
Yeah, what's the drop-in rate for everybody else?
For an adult, the regular drop-in fee is six dollars.
Okay.
And it includes swimming, the gymnasium, the basketball gym, anything you want to do as long as you're in the building. If you are a permanent resident of Lincoln City, for an adult, the drop-in fee is three-fifty.
Didn't know that. I've lived here nine years.
For a senior citizen, the regular drop-in fee is five dollars. If you're a permanent resident of Lincoln City, it is three dollars.
Overall, the budget for last year was $1,210,477. The budget for this year is $1,190,017. Just by comparison, between just the two years of the budget, the current year that we're in and the proposed budget, the personnel services, our personal services is approximately eight thousand dollars less. And the materials and services for this year was $346,429 and for the coming year's budget at $329,477. Capital is remaining approximately the same for the budget. The facility improvements that we have that are associated with this, the first includes a diesel generator. We actually had our generator go out and Gail has done a marvelous job of figuring out how to make that work. So we're proposing to replace our generator, upgrading of the security camera systems for $11,596, install LED lights on the building exterior for $3,200, $5,000 for replacing a worn carpet in the lobby, $5,100 to replace the portable steps into the main pool, $2,700 to replace the natatorium drinking fountain, and $1,100 to extend the safety railing in the small pool.
Thank you. With this building maintenance, is that separate than the capital outlay?
The $55,000 for the generator is separate under the capital.
The facilities capital.
We have a couple of capital items for the recreation center that is actually in the facilities capital fund.
Separate then this.
It's in a different budget, yeah.
They're not adding up.
I know, I was looking for the generator too.
Those numbers don't add up, do they?
The other item in the facilities capital is the installation of an ultraviolet sanitation system for the small pool and the spa, the same as we installed for the main pool this current fiscal year. And we're also proposing to install a salt generator, which would eliminate completely gas chlorine in our pool facility because the salt generator creates its own chlorine and that would provide a safer environment for staff and patrons, eliminate chloramines in the pool environment, so you would have no chlorine smell or chlorine on your skin. It would reduce operation cost and chemical cost by about fourteen thousand a year. The total cost for UV for the small pool, the main pool, and then the salt generators for all three bodies of water is about fifty-seven thousand dollars. So it would take about three and a half years to recoup those costs from the savings that we would realize from our operations and chemical savings.
Those purchases are reflected in this?
In the facilities capital fund, yep. They're included.
So we don't have those savings proposed yet?
Correct, because it's not adopted yet. So that would come off of the operation cost.
Yes, ma'am.
There are four items under materials and services that have a double asterisk. Is there significance to that?
Yes. It helps my memory. Those four items are what is funded by the transient room taxes, so I'm determining how much goes into that. It helps me remember.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Richard.
Gail, how much are you generating in user fees, approximately? Or maybe this is better for Debbie.
Well, our community center revenue, we're estimated to take in, and these are the majority of user fees, for this fiscal year, three-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars.
Debbie, those are three lines on page eight.
Yes, there's a community sale, sorry, community center point-of-sale revenue, that's your goods for resale, right?
And that's also the drop-in fees.
Okay, drop-in fees. And then there's a community center revenue line, and then the third line is a community center revenue employee, the three-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-one, that's our employee memberships that are expensed.
Yeah, the wellness.
There's also a couple other revenue items in here that belong to the community center. There's the multi-purpose building fee, and farther on down, there's a special recreation program and an after-school program.
If we were hosting meets, where would that fall under?
That would fall under community center revenue.
Okay. Thank you.
Gail, are you seeing an increase in membership and/or drop-ins from year over year over year?
Yes, both. We've had a good year this year and we've seen a steady increase in both.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Susan's cap being a little picky here, should be workers' comp, one, two, three, four.
Yeah, I think that's on every page. I'll get that changed before I print the final version.
Second thing is, you know, you're going to get some pushback, I would assume, from raising the rates from the locals, and I don't know if you can keep those less than the tourists, because I think you have a margin there of what the tourists are willing to pay versus what you're charging. And I think you're leaving some revenue on the table. And the second thing, my opinion, the second thing, we need a sign.
Yes.
We keep going over that, and where's the damn sign? You know, you've got these big pieces of paper that are falling off up there. What we need is a sign that says what it is and that the public's welcome. And anyway, that's my two cents.
Yeah, I put a banner across Highway 101 four years ago.
I would love to do that. ODOT has something to say about that.
By the way, your salt water and that's just wonderful stuff. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I am not sure, I think this is what Mr. Ward was saying, but I'm not sure that I would like to increase the rate to the residents. I just, I don't think that sounds real friendly. But I, and I'm saying this next thing as a past city employee, not of here, but of one. And if I had a free membership to a gym or to a pool or something, that would be like amazing and outstanding and whoever does that. So I guess my question is, is there some change we can make in?
We do do that.
I know. That's my point. I think it ought to be a shared cost. And that would help in your revenue. I don't know what that, what percentage that would be.
That is why we created that third, that revenue line item that takes into account the value of those employee memberships, so that we can at least see that. I don't think membership would go up if you started charging, so it's probably already accounted for, sort of.
They wouldn't be paying, they are not paying anything now, and what if they paid ten percent or something, then that would be more revenue. And right now, the city's paying for it, so it's just moving from one column to another. But I'm just, I'm just saying, I just think it's-
What would happen is it would reduce the expenditures in individual departments, so like the employee wellness budget in my department would go down.
And it would increase revenues.
It would.
To the community center.
You could increase the employee revenue and increase the actual revenue.
They'd have to write out a ten-dollar check or something.
Yes, that's right, the actual, I'm sorry, you're right, the revenue would not change. It would just, it would be a decrease in expenses.
But it would change because if it didn't change, you'd be assuming everybody did it. But if I'm an employee and I get a free membership, that's fine. And if you all of a sudden tell me I'm paying ten bucks a month for it, I may say, eh, not interested anymore. So there will be an impact on it.
Right.
Yes, please. Yes.
If I recall, when that policy was originally adopted, some teen years ago, I think I was on the council at the time it was discussed, the idea was that it was sort of a perk and to keep the employees healthy because that reduces your health care costs overall, long-term. We should also point out that we don't charge the fire department either. Whether that's enough of an incentive to get people to actually go is another question.
So how many people that work for the city use the facilities?
Almost half.
That's impressive.
We have, we have had really good success, I think, in our medical insurance rates over the last several, several years, like seven, eight years of our increases being really low. Now, you know, whether that's attributable to this or not, I, you know, who's to say? But if it affects it a little bit, it's worth it because medical costs are so high.
We're competitive in our prices for the meets and community-held events and trainings and all that. We stay up to date with the cost.
Yes, very competitive. In fact, we're very low when it comes to our multi-use billing fees, and I would like to increase those even more than ten percent, you know, compared to other venues in town, other venues that are in facilities, the same as ours.
That was my question, is the information isn't in what we're provided, but fundamentally, I trust your judgment and staff's judgment on all of this, is, you know, looking at what similar facilities are charging. I assume you've done that.
We're very much on the low side.
Yeah. Any other questions on Recreation?
One more, please.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Gail, has the sprinkler heads in the gym been protected?
We've got about half of them protected now. We're working with a company out of Indiana, and they're very slow. Not all the sprinkler heads are the same, and so about half of them have to be manufactured specially. And I know my facility manager is on the email, on the phone with them every couple of weeks, and they're kind of the only game in the country to get them manufactured, but we're working on it. Like I say, about half of them now are protected with heavy-duty sprinkler covers.
Thank you. I have ten minutes.
Okay, I think we can cover the next, perhaps the next two. The next one that we have is the general non-departmental, general fund non-departmental. I'm going to ask Debbie to explain this.
Thank you, Gail.
And then I'll just highlight a couple of things that I think should be pointed out.
So this fund is kind of a catch-all fund where we put things that don't really fit anywhere else. In the personnel services, we have our emergency coordinator. Is that the right? Yeah.
There's one employee here.
Yeah. It's a one-part-time employee that's in here. Other types of things that we have in here are, you know, support for the bus program, our contributions to outside agencies.
Where does seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars in membership and dues come from?
That is, eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty, that is for the Oregon Cascades West Council of Government, and then another six thousand for the League of Oregon Cities. And then there's four others, about seven hundred, nine hundred dollars each, Government Ethics Committee, Chamber of Commerce. We have some monies in here for the budgeted for the Eclipse, and we also have a hundred and fifty thousand in here, that's part of the one million dollar, one-time expenditures for wayfinding and replacing local signs.
If you let me jump in on that one. If you look at other supplies, that's six-two-two-nine-zero-zero-one, last year was fifteen thousand, this year it's forty-two thousand. We had a, that fifteen thousand was just identified as miscellaneous costs that we might run into. We reduced that to twelve thousand and then added thirty thousand dollars for the Eclipse. And so that's the primary reason for that jump. And then, and then as the logo and wayfinding is, Debbie mentioned, is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's part of that one million dollars.
I do have one question for the one-part-time employee. They have an employee assistance wellness of eight thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars, whereas other departments with one employee is like-
Yes, this is the one exception to that, to that thing. This is also where we run the employee wellness program through. There's a program that, for example, they have in Healthy Living Challenges, and they give out prizes for that. I think the employee health fair that we do once a year, there's some funding that comes out of that, so.
The other two points that I'd like to just mention before coming to your questions on page twenty-nine, item number six-two-three-one-zero-nine-seven, it says ten thousand dollars for last year and a zero for this year. That's because of the creation of the Economic Development Department. Then the other is the next line down, six-two-three-one-one-nine-nine, contributions to outside agency is increased from fifty thousand dollars to one hundred thousand dollars. That reflects, and that extra fifty thousand dollars reflects contributions that would be dedicated towards homeless organizations, agencies that service the homeless. That is an expense that we have this year. It appears at this point that we will probably not spend that, but this isn't a rollover expense. This is one that I'm putting in as an ongoing year-to-year increase on the budget.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
What is local bus program? It doesn't seem to increase very much.
We help fund the local bus that runs through town.
That's our contribution.
The loop bus?
The loop bus, yeah.
Okay.
That's our contribution to it.
If we gave more money, would we have more scheduling stops and would it run more often?
I haven't asked that question, but we'll ask.
Okay.
There's a meeting, I've been to one meeting so far, and then I will be attending the eighteenth. I'm not sure, but in the next two weeks, I'll be going to another meeting. But, yeah, I was going to ask that same question. Anybody else?
Any other questions?
Yes. Yes, sir. Sure. Number six-three-two-zero-four-one, emergency services capital equipment, fifteen thousand and six thousand, do you recall what that was?
Is that the satellite?
Which number are we on?
Emergency Services Capital Equipment. Six-three-two-zero-four-one.
I would, I'd have to look that up. I could venture a couple guesses, but-
Maybe it's a generator or something.
Or a satellite trailer or something. Or it could be a generator too, yeah, for the EOC, for EOC building. That's a possibility too. But I can, I can find out what that is.
Yeah. And I guess my question, are there not other things that could be capital related to emergency services, could be, that might want to be funded?
We'll check on that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Richard.
The Eclipse is going to have some budgetary impact on the city. Where is that included in this budget? Is there a separate line item or is it just scattered throughout? For the expenses or for the revenue? For the, for the-
For the revenue?
Okay, both. For the expenses, we have put thirty thousand dollars into this. That would be for supplies and other things that we need. Employees' time would be absorbed into the individual budgets where the employees are working, where they're coming out of. And so there's not a separate amount that's reflected, but this thirty thousand goes for anything we might need to buy associated with it. As far as revenue goes, yes, we are expecting an increase of revenue, and we're expecting it to come through the transient room tax.
Thank you.
Of course.
I have a question for the logo and wayfinding. If you can separate and define the two, not combine them, and then also the cost associated with the logo up to date, how much money have we spent on our twenty-something logos, please? And possibly trying to determine why it's been so difficult to solidify a unified image.
Did you start talking about sequels and, yeah.
Sequels?
It goes down from there.
All right.
When Ed Driscoll comes up to talk about VCB, we'll talk about logos a little bit more because he has been our lead guy in this, so.
Sure.
You've got three minutes. Do you want us to go to transfers?
I have a question on this one.
Yes, sir.
Election costs five thousand dollars in the proposed budget.
Election costs five thousand dollars in the proposed budget.
Do elections cost very, year-to-year, depending on if there's a, special elections that are being held off-cycle or not? And there's an every-other-years cycle to it, the normal ones, I think. Is that right?
Right.
Sure.
Okay, the final thing that will touch base in just the next couple of minutes is on page thirty of the, of the budget section. This is dating with the transfers. These are all transfers that the city, that the city is making to other funds, including the Lincoln Center. You'll see the percentage for art, that's the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we've already discussed. Street capital. Again, the thing that I would like to really note on that is that's a six-hundred thousand dollar transfer. Over the last three years, we really have beefed up the amount of money that is going into streets.
Mr. Chandler, could we, could we, this is a very important discussion, and we have just a teeny bit of time. Could we begin here, or are you going to go to nine o'clock?
Do you want to begin here on this? Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine by me.
Yeah, that's probably good.
Okay.
Two weeks, I think, is the next meeting.
We also need to hold a public hearing before the meeting's closed.
Each, and that, again. That the revenue sharing.
Well, we did, we did, I thought that was the public hearing.
I did not do it right.
Well, you did it right.
You should open, yes, you should.
Yeah.
If, if there's any question, then let's, yes, let's open it.
So the next meeting will, no, now?
Yeah, or your, whoever is vice could, could, could do it.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Could you please continue the meeting? I have to leave.
All right.
You have a vice chair.
We just told this.
No, I think, Mr. Ritchie.
Mr. Ritchie. I thought it was Mr. Ritchie.
You don't know who your head of vice is?
I, here, I'll let you use my pen. Mr. Ritchie, thank you. Could you please continue the meeting?
Let the record show, the chairman is leaving.
Sorry, Mr. Anderson, I'm sorry.
So we would need, you would need to call for a public hearing. You would need to call for a public hearing to.
On page seven, there's a revenue line item called state revenue sharing. It goes into the general fund, is not really tied to a specific purpose. However, we are required to hold a public hearing both at the budget committee and at the city council level in order to receive these funds. If anyone has any comments about whether they think we should or should not accept these revenues, or any comments on, about how we should spend them, that is the purpose of the public hearing.
So you would, procedurally, you would need to call for a vote to open the public hearing, make any comment, and then call for a closing of the public hearing. Do we want to do that now at this late hour? Yes.
Yes.
Did average transport.
It's noticed for today, so we have to.
All right. Let's open up the hearings.
I move to open the hearing.
Second.
State revenue sharing hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved? So do we have anyone that wants to talk on this issue?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Public discussion is over? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Wait, I have one little question. Are we all done, done? Um, we're not done, Ben? Oh, we're just done with the public hearing part? Okay, so I can continue talking later?
About the other stuff.
Oh, the other stuff.
We'll pick up there next, in two weeks.
I still have one question.
Okay.
Geographical information systems, it's throughout the budget. And it, I think it's where, in the public works department?
It is a part of, it's a part of what's called the internal service funds. There are three groups that are associated with that, vehicle maintenance, the geographical information systems, and IT. IT is served under finance, and then geographical is under public works, yes.
Well, I'm just, because I kind of live on this floor sometimes, I've learned a lot about it, and I see it's really crucially important. And because we're looking at high-speed internet and the services that could be provided, I just find this fascinating, and I don't know if other people know what it does, because I sure didn't. And I was wondering if you could maybe ask Sandy to do a presentation at the board?
Sure.
Council meeting?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
I just think we should know more about what this is.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, now I'm done talking.
Any further business? Next meeting is what, two weeks, Ron?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, sorry.
Somebody have that date?
What?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Five, five-thirty, six?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty, good? What's the likelihood that we're going to get through the rest of this budget in one meeting?
Difficult.
Slim and none? Yeah, I, I think you will probably need a fourth meeting. Any recommendations for an additional day for planning purposes? Let, we need to let Debbie answer that, because there are some requirements that the, when it has to be before the city council and when it has to be approved, so. You would have to hold it before the end of the month, okay? So most likely, what you would have to do is to hold it within the week of the twenty-second. The problem is, is that you would not be able to do that on a Monday night, because that's the city council night.
So on June first, I have to send a budget notice for the city council to the paper. So I have to have my numbers by June, calculated and done by June first.
Yeah, so we would really need to either hold it to a second one the week of the fifteenth or the week of the twenty-second.
Is there a planning commission meeting on the sixteenth? Seventeenth or eighteenth?
Neither of those would be fine for me.
Okay, the first request was on the sixteenth. Fifteenth, seventeenth. No, that's when our next meeting is, on the fifteenth. My request is for the sixteenth, for our fourth meeting. If that keeps you clicking right along and if we're available, if there isn't a planning commission meeting that night.
I would propose we make it the week after. Twenty-second, twenty-third, or the twenty-third, yeah. Yeah, right, sorry.
I think we bump into city council meetings.
Do it on the twenty-third. City council meeting is twenty-second.
We do it on the twenty-third.
Twenty-third instead?
You are, same start time, five-thirty?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
At this point, there's nothing on the planning commission for the sixteenth training.
Can we do the twenty-third instead of the sixteenth?
Seventeenth.
You guys.
Can you do the seventeenth or eighteenth? Seven, seven, seventeenth is Wednesday, isn't it? Yeah. Might be okay.
Eighteenth is good.
Eighteenth is too iffy. Seventh.
I would not be able to do it the eighteenth, we're having an Eclipse presentation.
There was a suggestion over here for the twenty-third, is.
That would be fine for me. Twenty-third look good?
Yes.
Yes.
Twenty-third.
Five, five-thirty?
Five-thirty. Five-thirty.
Wonderful. Any further business? Motion to adjourn. Second. Meeting is adjourned, thank you very much. You've got this down, Dee.